To evolve committee, the whole workshop to order for October seventeen, that's October seventh, twenty twenty five. Five thirty. This item on the agenda is a review of the regular meeting agenda. As request concerns. We'll move to the first of the discussion items for this evening, which is King County Parks Investment Newall. That discussion is going to be led by Senator and Stephen. About ten to be.
Great. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. And so we put this on the cow agenda because as Mayor Potem and I work through different agenda items that are requested by council and make sure that they get on the council agenda. So this is one I believe we received over the summer, and so it was right to put on the agenda. And with that, I will turn it over to Director Lashewski at the quick PowerPoint to talk about some of the investments that we've had in King County and where we might go in the future. Ultimately, I think what staff are hoping for with this agenda item tonight is any kind of direction that council wants to provide staff on. Not necessarily on applying for grants, because we apply for every grant that we, well, I shouldn't say that. We apply for as many grants as we are eligible for. But at this point, if there's lobbying or advocacy material or advocacy efforts that you would like staff to engage in, we're just looking for some counsel direction tonight.
Good evening, Council, T. Lenishuk, T. Public Works. This is a brief history of some recent grants. Twenty sixteen through twenty twenty three. So we have in county conservation features, in county sports net through RCO in there. It's in the same period of war and then all the parks. But yes, Big Rock is the lucky recipient of most of the funding. It's also where we spend most of our capitals. So that makes sense. Bringing bring in county youth for the Big Rock, Taylor Landing for playgrounds, Big Rock for Go-Being and then preliminary. And then, of course, the conservation features one, which will be in your packet next week. We have a formal amendment to bring forward the additional almost five hundred grand.
Uh, next slide.
And these are the current county grants programs. Healthy communities, that's up to two hundred fifty thousand. Youth sports, there's two fifty for construction or a hundred K of programming. Parks capital up to a million, aquatics up to five million with a sixteen million dollar pocket this year. Open spaces on their website. So open space up to one billion and community partnerships is quite the boondoggle. And it's TVB and needs a community partner, not led by county, could be a city or other agency. So that was quite a special team. That is just a brief overview of what the King County Parks Group provides for grants, see through their funding and sure will to add to that topic, but there you go.
And council members like to help the conversation. Council member Napolin.
Sure, yeah, I might as well start. So I was the council member who initiated wanting to have this conversation. And it's kind of been an ongoing request of mine. I don't know. Hopefully people were able to read what I sent to Mayor Potem. For years, I've attended the Palm Valley Recreation Meeting. I haven't as much recently as the staff has been attending regularly. But through that, I connected with like quite a few people at King County. And there was definitely acknowledgement of, yes, we should have a conversation potentially. There are partnerships we can have because for me, from what I see is King County Parks is often a complement to city parks. Most of King County, the residents are in the city. So, you know, you have kind of this overlapping city parks and county parks. But here in Duval, only a small portion is incorporated and the rest is unincorporated. And so we end up providing by ourselves, really, all of the parks for this radar unincorporated area that King County does not really serve in our, in our area. There, there isn't a developed park that's really within a reasonable distance. And so especially when it has, you know, a ballpark with life or, or anything like that. So through, you know, different advocacy and having conversations about this, I had, I guess it was about two years ago, I connected with Sam Jarrett. He offered, he's like, hey, how about if I come out to Duval? We have some discussions. Let's look at what you have. Let's have some further conversations. And so at that point, I believe he ended up getting into connection with staff, Dr. Lashewski, and I'm not really sure exactly where it went from there. It could be that the discussion ended up bearing forward using the conservation futures. I'm not really sure where that conversation went, but for me, my primary request was not just that, hey, we get some one-time money, it's or let's find a way to buy for our city to buy land. It was really to find a partnership to serve the residents in and around city of Duval. So that included the unincorporated residents. And some of the reasons I feel like the levy, for example, was a disadvantage for us is that many of the other areas that are surrounded by unincorporated areas also have municipal parks district. We do not. And what's interesting is those communities that have a municipal park district that overlap, you know, potentially a municipal area, is that they got a very large dollar amount out of the levy kind of for operating expenses and we did not get that. So we're kind of shortchanged in multiple ways. We don't have a local park. We don't have a municipal parks district that also gets funded by the county levy. There's just a lot of reasons. There's just a lot of unincorporated area. And if you really look at it, our parks have to service everyone in Riverview School District. And that goes actually all the way over to the other side of the valley for all of those students like Ink Lake area almost. It's a very large area and city of Duval, like I said, we are the provider of the only turf field with bike. So what I would like to open up a conversation about is advocating with King County Parks to find some kind of partnership that isn't just, oh, here, let me give you some money for land. Here, let me, you know, give you some money, you know, a grant to help you build this park. I want to form a partnership with an acknowledgement that we are a service provider for the unincorporated residents and also for our own residents inside city limit for providing a park. And King County Parks provide that for most other areas. We are alone here doing that. So I would like to find some kind of partnership where they either acknowledge that one of our parks is kind of a joint park, we're serving as a King County Park and a Duval Park, or some kind of additional maintenance funding ongoing above and beyond. So, um, because like I said, our dollar amount that we got is based on residents inside city limit. And we serve substantially larger population outside of city limit. So I would like to advocate. And you know what? You can already say, well, the levy just happened. Well, the levy happened like five years ago and we kind of had the same, you know what I mean? Like you have to start advocating at some point. And I would like that to start now and having conversations. So anyway, I'm actually curious how that conversation went with Sam Jarrett. Way back in two thousand twenty-three. I don't know that kind of going back a bit. But I sent it to council just six months ago, I think. And I think the council distribution went to directors as well. So anyway, that was a little bit long-winded, but it has been such a passion of mine and I'm leaving. But I really hope that everyone here picks up the torch and really tries to get something going with that. I think we owe it to our residents here in Duval, but we aren't shouldering all of them off. We just can't afford it.
I don't think there are way in Director Lenishewski or I can about another council member to sort of grab out their opinion. You know, if there was an ask to Steve about.
I mean, I'm curious, yes, how, you know, when he met up with Sam Jarrett, because I had kind of provided some of the information about, you know, really sort of partnership and then really would we like to make a concerted effort to create some kind of advocacy land to try to move on some of it.
Yeah, last contact with them at specifically he is with DNR now.
Yeah.
So not with the county. And it's really in staff's opinion, it's more of a policymaker request. We can request all of them all the day. Their hands are tied by their operating policies. So they can't do what doesn't exist. So they would need guidance on creating that relationship or direction from their executive or some administrator somewhere to do that. So we, we need, you know, like Councilmember Napolin said, valleywide. We are competing even against our valley peers for grants and the same bucket of money for the county levy program. We do try to strategize like, I don't know that any of us stepped up and said, oh, we're not going to go through return kind of thing, but maybe like the other, other program, but not a lot we can do besides belly to them.
So is there a way, because I heard your initial was, so you know, you're looking for guidance from, from council for what staff can do. And so just kind of reflecting on what council member Napolin said, you know, is, is there a way to put together an advocacy info packet that either we or staff could use that could contain information such as how, how large of an area, what, what quantities of people that are likely outside of Duval proper are our parks serving? So we have those data points available to us as we're trying to advocate. How frequently, how much? And then maybe there's some way to, to establish, you know, what are parks maintenance costs allotted across the population that we're serving or something like that, because then we can come up with, with maybe a better and more specific ask. And then I think outside of, of having those advocacy materials that, that we can use, both we as council and as staff, as we're talking with the various, you know, kind of council members or whoever. Maybe there's also, which I knew you're already doing, but maybe there's also a degree of inquiry with other local partnerships, YMCA, et cetera, where, where if we're working with those folks, they would also be able to insert, you know, some inject some funds for our land supporting their programs or something like that. So, so I mean, for me, those are the two ideas based on what council member Napolin, but if I, if I have this data available to me, it's easier for me to ask.
Very shiver.
So first of all, I, I agree with council member of that one's proposal that we do need some kind of advocacy program. I think that program needs to be thought about a bit, thought about in respect of what, what really, what information does the county really need? Facts and figures would be nice. If we could do a comparison perhaps between, you know, ourselves, carnation, possibly some other municipality as far as what county funds they receive per capita versus what Duval receives per, you know, per capita. And, you know, highlight the, the fact that, that we, we, our existing city, city parks serve a much larger area. I think that's important for that to understand as well. So like I said, I think, you know, we can't just say, well, we're going to advocate. And we can't, you know, we, you know, whatever, talk to somebody in the county. But I think we need a better approach as far as being organized, as far as coming with actual facts and numbers are concerned. And that means staff to get that information.
City Administrator McNair.
Yes. So in terms of kind of doable asks, right? It is absolutely doable for us to put together like a one-page fact sheet, similar to how we do our legislative agenda or fact sheets when we go to Olympia that says, kind of, here's the ask, here's why, and articulate a position paper on kind of a single piece of paper that we would shop. Probably, I mean, when you think about who the recipient is, right? It would be your director of local services, in county council member, probably advocating with the rest of King County. But I would say the council members who on King County Council are somewhat similarly situated. So thinking about like Reagan Dunn, who represents, you know, like places with rural districts that are somewhat similar to ours. So we can absolutely do that. I mean, I don't know what data is available. It might be, we might have to do some on a better word, fuzzy math and some assumption-based work on, you know, how many students are in the river view school district and where are they? So I don't want to promise like auditable facts and figures, but I mean, it is absolutely doable to put together an advocacy piece for you all. Now, who is advocating what's most compelling? I think that's probably a different question into Director Lashewski's point. Is staff to, you know, park staff is probably not the most compelling.
How's one retire?
Um, yeah, I agree with most of what's been said. I think I'd be curious if surely King County has had some kind of study on park users. And, and I know with our own scheduling, we have an idea based on priority, right? That which leagues have mostly in city limits or whatever percentage that we already have.
Agree they are willing to.
Right, for sure. Which, which in a way does tell you something, right? I mean, so if they're not going to get that higher priority, they may not quite meet that, which means it's likely a good assumption that it's more unincorporated, you know, kids. So I think the data is, the fuzzy data is there that at least would be good for storytelling, for advocacy. But yeah, I agree. That's, it's, we need strategy to, who do you talk to, you know? It's like you just said, staff is probably not it, because you have to talk policymaker to policymaker and start to see what the appetite is there for that and, and go from there.
Remember, if you have their that's all I have for the proposal.
I thought of this too.
I had a couple sort of comments and, and I mean, they, they mirror a lot of what's said here. I, I think there is a frustration. I went back to the July sixteenth meeting where we sort of talked about this. It actually comes up if you do an AI search, it pulls in our council meeting and it's got a bunch of bullet points, but you know, the, the frustration that, you know, Shuquami, Carnation, Paul City, you know, got grants in excess of a million dollars and a lot of that is reinvestment in additional, you know, property. I, I think, I think one of the things that you had indicated, City Administrator McNab is in one of the conversations, at least being council member, indicated, well, they weren't aware of the substandard part, which I find a little hard to believe. Because we've been advocating for that for, for, for forever. But a lot of it is around the framework and I think that's what we're sort of acknowledging, even the, the fact piece. That doesn't address the structural impediments, which I think Director Lenishewski had addressed where either the grant beacon process isn't, isn't favorable to Duval or it's the definitions, I think, some of like how we interpreted equitable and some of the well-being, the language wasn't there. And, you know, I, I am curious if the county has an equivalent to like the roads level of service where they, they, you know, rate their parks. And because that would be really interesting to see how they actually rate the park.
Sorry.
Uh, uh, we, I don't know one King County park that they, they have, but, but I do think, you know, the, I want to acknowledge the, the assistance we got for acquiring some of the, the big rough property. And I think there's opportunities to further invest there. There are lots of, you know, smaller, we talked about a fitness trail. We talked about trail improvements, infrastructure, bathrooms, play. I mean, there's lots of small things, but I don't think it addresses what council member Napolin is sort of a maintenance, sort of a reinvesting in the existing infrastructure. So I think that's really where, where I see the opportunity is. Let's get our ducks in the road in terms of understanding the facts and the landscape. And then really it's how we influence council or the decision makers to either adjust the, the rubric or remove barriers or acknowledge, you know, that Duval is, is underserved. And so I think that's where, you know, I don't have a plan in mind, but I do think there is more of a strategic. And I think the key, and this is actually the point you made previously, is we can't wait until the next time this comes up. There's obviously this levy is already out there and it's funding, you know, going forward. But how do we find opportunities within the existing partnerships, engagements, thinking outside the box to move some of the conversation forward? So more of a strategic piece that I think we have to work on as a part of council and then be ready when, when opportunities present themselves.
I mean, one of the things I think that council member Napolin said that is really persuasive and I think that we could flesh out a little bit is you know, whether Northman, Carnation, some of those cities surrounding us got investment. They get an investment like Duval does in a direct appropriation. But Mount Si Municipal Park District also got a large investment. And I think it's a compelling case to make and I don't want to push it too far because but I would say in many ways, Duval operates like a municipal park district where we're offering services to a wider environment. And if we can frame it that way to say, we're not getting the benefits of it like Mount Si did. And Mount Si got a big investment in this levy. So kind of framing it as, well, we're not a municipal park district and I think there's pros and cons of whether or not we should even entertain that as a possibility. We're operating as such and that should at least argue for more investment here in Duval.
That's for Napolin.
The one other piece that I didn't mention that someone said something that reminded me of it is we don't have a municipal park district. And I, I think you mentioned there's pros and cons. And one of them is that the administrative overhead of a municipal parks district is expensive and it would really cut in to what we can provide. And so I don't know if that's where we're at, if it if it makes sense, because those are some of the things that I could maybe, and you know, whether the city is the lead on this, but I've heard from a lot of people in the community that they'd love to be some kind of friends of Duval Park or, or some type of nonprofit that has an advocacy to it potentially. And often when you apply for grants, you apply for different things that makes your grants look even better because you have a whole group of people and a board also advocating alongside with you. So maybe that would be another argument. Yeah, we don't have a municipal parks district, but we have a very active friends of the parks or something like that, where the community showing this kind of larger area coming together. So I definitely heard that from quite a few people who were on the parks. The, the project where we were doing our first was about these bases. They were all just like, oh, we should have something like that. And it actually is in the plan suggesting that we do that.
Any other comments from you?
So something that we already, we already touched on was, was just looking at the stakeholders and, and who are the decision makers in this? And so probably separate from the, the fact sheet, it would be helpful to, to identify, you know, who, who are the directors? Who are the council members that are most likely to be influential in, in these kinds of decisions? And then it'll be easier for us to kind of come up with the communications plan or who knows this person and who can talk to that person.
And like that input source, the direct decision makers as well as the input source.
Yeah, that's great. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I can take a, you know, effort at a first draft identifying. I mean, there are also folks that are stakeholders who I think advocacy and early communication should be really important. So for instance, the tribe. So any parks project, you know, shouldn't necessarily involve the tribe and they're not always in the calm of people who want to have huge amounts of built park infrastructure. So I'm thinking about the whole stakeholder list as a broad consumption of people to, you know, have early and opting communication. Yeah, I can put something together like that.
Any comments for that to address the need and you've got some direction as well? Um, the second discussion item for the evening is agenda bill twenty-five forty-two, a request to review, a request review from Adventure Community Church, and that is up the line by City Administrator McNab.
Well, thank you. And thanks for your patience. I was on vacation at the last council meeting. So was able to put together and quickly try to understand the complexity of the request. So part of the request is actually fairly straightforward, but the second further request is fairly complex. So I spent the majority of the weekend. Thank you to planning team, Larissa and to Steve, who particularly Larissa walked very patiently through the development regulations with me in the last few days, explaining what exactly would be required. Next slide. Okay, so the first request, and I believe you have it, you have the written request both in the report as well as attached the agenda bill. So the first request is straightforward. Their building permit has expired and they need an extension of their building permit. And the cost for that is thirty-eight forty ninety-four. And you have an agenda bill, I believe, on consent tonight. Did it not make consent? Um, I, so here's how I'd address that. At the council meeting, we should add this agenda bill to the consent agenda. Or actually as a matter for you all to discuss. So I don't think it made the, it makes the.
No, you had it listed as an audit here at council.
And council would like to approve page two. Council would like to approve this item. It can be added to the council meetings. Okay, all right. So thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. So yes, that would be the profit. So if you want to consider the agenda bill for waiver of the building permit, we can add it to the agenda at the beginning of the regular. Okay, next slide. Okay, so then the next request is kind of a two-part request. The first part is relief from the development regulations or financial assistance. So the first part of that request is a specific request to waive the requirement to underground utility per the conditions of approval from the hearing and signature. Or the city would agree to pay the cost of those improvements to PSC and that's a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. Director Lenishewski has been in touch with PSC about possible grants that the church would be eligible for to offset their costs. And so I've attached the link here. They're not directly local religious institutions, but there might be some living room there. So we've tried to through our contacts with PSC, see if we can find ways to help the church minimize the cost. And I wonder, Director Lenishewski, if you want to add anything to that point.
Yeah, just knowing a little bit about their project and their number is currently an estimate and then how those improvements work. They hire a contractor, pull to pull. They're the ones doing the work underground and putting in their own conduit and whatnot. So that's their cost burden from the contractor. And then PSC and Telco subsidiary PSC basically take and do all the line work conversions to take it out and pull, put it in their new conduits, get it to the other end and energize anything in between. So the cost is not a true PSC cost. It's PSC's cost for installation in any of their subsidiaries, like the Telco. And their contractors work to do the undergrounding preparation for conduit and everything that goes underground, which houses the electrical system. So they do have that cost of air. I did speak to our municipal liaison. Again, there's not a, it's a late, late in the game, one. Two, it's not guaranteed. It's a fifteen thousand dollar max. It's not going to solve their problems. He, it is a wholly separate arm, like the philanthropy arm of PSC. So like regular PSC is not involved. They have their own, own team. He said, it says right on the website, religious institutions are not eligible, but he wasn't sure, like they host like a food pantry, which they do, or other things that are community benefit partners. There may be some living room, but they would have to apply on behalf. That was submit a letter of support or whatnot. That's kind of what PSC can offer at this point in the game.
Uh, oh, go ahead. Is it okay if I ask a quick question? Um, since this was due to, you know, it was an insurance-related matter, will their insurance not cover this kind of cost with having to rebuild? Do you know more about that?
Sure. So yeah, long story short, it was a scene accident. It was covered by insurance. They went round and round. My understanding is they reached a settlement agreement. So they, they received a number from insurance and then that's bad. So insurance in a sense is off the hook outside of the settlement agreement, like which is a pretty tough. We don't know the number. It may be more short than they've already shared, you know, just how many improvements. We don't know. So I'm not sure how they got to where they are, but I know they, they did reach a separate settlement agreement. You know, when they started with us, like, oh yeah, it's insurance, they're. We understand we have to bring things up to standard and all that kind of stuff, all permits. So insurance can cover that. And then they came back and had an apartment and that's not the case. But top on our side of it, but it is quite an interesting predicament. I'm not sure what your next slide says.
Yeah.
Yeah, but.
So I just wanted to reference the development design sections that we're talking about. So the hearing examiner's decision referred to a couple of requirements. When uh it went through design review. One was the utility location. Then next slide. And these are standard um. Uh, design regulations and then the other is responsibility. Uh, required road infrastructure improvements under one dash one point two one. So these are the sections that are at issue. It's a lot of words, but I just kind of wanted to reference what, what the requirements from the hearing examiner decision. And then next slide. Okay, so here's the process to achieve the waiver. Um, so the first thing as a foundation is the hearing examiner's decision includes a condition to underground utilities. Per the standard development regulations, the ones that I've just showed you on utilities and uh furniture improvements. The appeal period has expired to request reconsideration from the hearing examiner. And the underlying site plan approval for land use entitlement has also expired. That expired in April. Next slide. So in order to do a waiver of the underground utilities. We would need to change the outcome of the condition of approval. And that would mean they would have to go back through the land use entitlement process, which includes submitting a complete application. For site rent plan review. Uh, we would issue a notice of application, take the proposal to the planning commission for another round of design review. Uh, recommendation to the hearing examiner and put a pin in that. Uh, advertising, holding a public hearing and then having another hearing examiner decision. The cost of that process is about seventy five, it's a seventy five hundred dollar deposit to cover staff time noticing here examiner fees. We think it probably be about three thousand dollars because it really, it would be a minor point. And then the way it works is we refund the difference. Next slide.
Okay. How, how long would that process take?
Um, probably. I read that. Um. Fourish months. Yeah, I think that's. Yeah.
Cause there are timelines that are obligated for certain phases of the.
It would take a fair amount of staff time to rebuild this. Um, next slide. So what is your role?
You missed that last sentence.
Uh, okay. Well, here, what is your? So your role is. Should you want to recommend the wa- waiver of the requirement to underground utilities? That process from staff's perspective should include that you all should do a policy change. That would allow requests from religious institutions or nonprofits to be eligible for reduction. In or a change to the standard development regulations. Cause what you don't want to do is open up. This process to kind of onesie twosies. You should have a policy decision about how you treat these kinds of requests. Um. If you want to make a policy change to those design guidelines. We could begin that work on the November eighteenth council meeting based on what you have in front of you. Cause remember when we have one more in October and then November eighteen. And the next meeting on the twenty first is pretty stuck with budget stuff. Um. So then you get kind of your policy standard set, deviation in policy. Then should Adventure Church want to go back through the site plan approval process? We would tell the hearing examiner, hey, new rules to your decision and ask him. To basically rewrite his decision with this new policy instruction. So that's how council could get to that. Alternatively, you could. Um. And this evening agreed to pay the cost and then we would paper that through a budget amendment. Um, for you all to consider. So that's kind of where you're at with the second request.
Time for a recap?
Yeah, I'm just curious. Um, I was just looking on my phone. So I was trying to remember. Sidewalks or what's currently there. Um, I imagine that entire stretch of road, if it heads up the hill. Is on some type of plan to put a sidewalk and eventually underground utilities if that.
I don't believe the entire length of Stella is on C I P. I know the O, OT one and uptown like the motor blocks. Which I think stop, it's, I think not roadway. They're between second and roadway. And then you have the sidewalk currently on the south side that's separated. You have no curving dirt on that road. You have newer asphalt, a little wind, steep area and then a small walkway long. Southern joint lane.
Is.
Nothing on their side.
So is Adventure Church putting in a sidewalk?
Mm-hmm.
Um. I guess for me, I think what differentiates this is that. It was due to the destruction, like an unexpected. It's not like, oh, we want to build, build a big new church. It was completely, you know, an act of God, I guess, or whatever we want to say. Um, and the church burned down. And so, um, I think one of their points really struck me. You know, if you, you have to then take the power down through this short stretch, then it goes back up. So you still got poles on either end. You aren't really gaining much. Um, cause it is just such a short, short stretch. So what I'm wondering is, um. I just don't see that as producing much of a public benefit. I guess what I'm saying to add to that one little section. Um. Is there a way that they could put just the conduit in so that later if we do it? You know, maybe it's still going in the air, but there's, so that no one has to. You know, jackhammer out their new sidewalk in, in years. Is there a way to put a conduit underground and really lessen the scope of the project so that when we go?
So your question is. Raising certain major, but we would hear, hey, can we put in dry utility, trenching and conduit? So we don't have to do it now. But somebody could in the future, should the city do a C I P, right? That is a question that should have brought up then. Deviations were actually supplied to the applicant, like.
Yeah, you subjected to them like hey.
If you want to change from the standard, you have to ask. And we told them that and they said, no, they need to. So we're kind of in a tough spot, right? We can't allow deviations. Once it's through the hearings examiner, the, it is, is, you know, that concrete. Troy can't issue a site plan approval on his end until all the law is checked. We can't do ours. No matter what, like, if you chose any of these avenues, I would certainly want to talk to the church. I don't know the situation anymore. Like at some point on some day, knowing construction contract loans, they already have a payment due. And we go out four months through a hearing and the building is occupiable in December, we can't issue a permit because. Permit work by definition is not complete. And then we're making a really big mess. But I want to make sure they know what they're getting into. Like if we had to have a conversation like, hey, timelines of this, because this is how. Like sadly, smaller entities, mom and pops, this is how it goes. Like, cause they, they trust someone who's helping them, but. There's so many questions that they know usually come up because of what they do. And then these people don't ask because they don't know, like, hey, what if, what if, what if? It's, it's just a really tough situation. Uh, but yeah, our job is to, you know, issue the rules and, and work through options. But yeah, no, that, that would have been a request. There's no reason we wouldn't have considered it. Like, hey, we get it. We'd rather have it dry lined and. Connect your building underground and prepare it for another day. Great, but like. And then scope creep happens with us on our jobs of theirs. Like there's barely any asphalt to paint to. They're gonna have to put more down than they show on their plan. It's going to morph.
That's what, that.
No, I, I was asking a brickhead asked a question.
Oh.
I just wanted to make sure everyone's, we've done the once around.
Yeah.
Uh. Pennsylvania.
Not yet. Uh, so it sounds to me like the church either had poor insurance or made a bad sum with the insurance stuff. One of the other, neither of which are the problem of the city. Uh. I think it would be setting a bad precedent to uh grant them a waiver. Uh, not to mention the extra work that would be for the city and even that extra work. Uh, essentially our other taxpayers are paying for. Paying a hundred and ninety's, what, what?
One thirty seven?
One thirty seven thousand dollars is absolutely out of the question. Uh, I as a taxpayer do not want to pay for the church. The church has to pay for that. Uh, just like I wouldn't want to pay for a residential or a business going up here in Duval. Uh, they need to be self, uh, self-funded. So the church has backed themselves into a corner and now is asking the city to help bail them out. Uh, first of all, I think the request is unreasonable. Uh. And as I said, I don't think uh the rest of the people in the city want to pay for their church. They need to find a way to fund it themselves. So I'm not in favor of a waiver, nor am I in favor of uh. Giving my money uh to uh to build, settle out that core.
I guess maybe so. Yeah, the, I guess there's two waivers that we're looking at, right? One is the um, what was it? The.
The building permit.
Fee waiver, yeah, for the building permit extension fee for thirty eight hundred dollars, I think.
Yeah, we haven't got to that post to know.
Well, anyway, that came, that was the first thing on the agenda. So I, I'm, I'm okay with granting that. But this other hundred and forty thousand or whatever it is, yeah, I, I agree with council membership. It's not really the city's problem, although I, I can, I can empathize with them. But um, you know, this is something that they really brought on to themselves and they're coming in as just such a late date with all this. I mean, their, their um building permit expired what, last month or whatever.
April.
April, and this is October and they're coming to us. So I think, you know, that's. I don't know what's going on with the church and, and who's managing their project, but. Yeah, I don't, I don't see us bailing them out on this. So, you know, the whole idea of forcing a section of the block to be. A hundred feet or whatever, it could be underground and the rest of the street isn't, is in sort of ludicrous in one sense. But then again, it sort of sets precedent for the whole street. Someone else down the street is going to say, hey, they didn't have to pay. So why am I? So I can see that being a problem more in the future. What about Rick, Rick Henry?
Um, I guess council member subtle about um the permit extension fee. I think that's a reasonable ask. And one on par with other ones that I feel we've done in the past. Um, I struggled so hard with. The utility undergrounding, um, because, you know, on one hand, it's the matter of the heart, you know, I feel for them. This is terrible. Um, but having to be responsible for taxpayer money and make sure like where is that line of gifting of public funds or going too far? Um, wha- what I struggle with, if I take the specifics out of it completely and look at the policy, what would the policy be? We have a lot of religious institutions coming on board soon. We've had some that have already gone through all this process. Um. So I struggle with what precedent we'd be setting, what would that policy look like? And initially I thought, what if, okay, if it was an accident, what if we made that, that was the policy exception? But again, that is not letting the insurance company off the hook when they should be paying for the difference and bringing something up to code. Or and, and I feel badly that that didn't work out for them or whatever had happened there. But um, I, yeah, I don't want to set that precedent either where, you know, we're just expected to make a change. Or make something go along with it just because that fell through. So um, I, I don't know what to do with the undergrounding utility beside it, like. I can't see a policy way, way out of it really, you know, um. That's where I'm stuck and I, I'm not okay paying that much or, or doing any of those other things.
Yeah, I, I agree with um both the, that's okay. Um, the fee waiver is okay for the, the permitting. Um. Like everyone else, I struggled with the other, I, the, the logistics and the pragmatics of, of undergrounding just this short. Stretch of, of power line is, is a bit silly. Um. But I also recognize the need as far as a future oriented city to put that stuff on the ground. I mean, that, that's good construction, best practice right now. Um, in terms of, so, so I, I also was just trying to figure out how, how could we make this happen? How, you know, what, what could work? And, you know, I'm empathetic to their causes as well. Uh, I don't feel like it should be the city's responsibility to cover these costs. Um. As I was thinking about how, how could we formulate policy, the policy that came to mind, I saw I have two ideas about how to handle this if we wanted to handle this. Um. Without just saying no straight out, which may also be an option to say. Um, but, but in terms of policy, it could be something where, you know, it's, it's disaster relief specifically. For a nonprofit organization. Um, and I do think we have to tighten that language because we don't want to set a precedent. And we don't want to allow other developers in the future just come and say, well, you did it, you know? So it's disaster relief for a nonprofit organization, you know, maybe, maybe that somehow makes it okay. Um, but not as a waiver, as a way to potentially defray costs. And so if we were also to put in place some sort of recorded agreements or potentially lean on the property that says when the city is ready. To do the lower part of the street, if that's part of the plan, right? If, if we're going to be undergrounding other stuff later. If they're willing to pay their proportional share at the time when we do the rest of the road. That makes sense to me. I don't, it probably costs a little bit extra to try to underground just one section. But if we're doing the whole thing, maybe that lowers the overall cost to hair. Um, and if they pay for it then, when we're doing the rest. I think I would be okay with that. But short of that, I don't, I don't, you know, and, and with that, again, it would have to be, there'd have to be something in writing. Where they're agreeing to it and a lien on their property if something happens and means a something. Um. So we couldn't lose that money, but we could recover it later.
I, I agree with your part number one. Fine. My other question and, and I agree with what the rest of you have said. My, my other consideration that I would, I'm wondering about. Does that building qualify as an historic building than Duval?
I don't believe so. It has, it's certainly historic significance, but it is not a historic building, meaning it. I mean, as you think about the charm of the city and.
Right.
What that building means to them now, I think people would view it as significant, but it does not meet the definition.
There you go.
That's true. That's true. Yeah. Cause that would be my only thought that maybe if it did qualify as an historic building, we could put. Some language in our policy for that. Um, but since it doesn't meet that requirement in that point, so.
So I, I, you know, sort of echoing a couple of themes, you know, I am empathent to their plight. And I know they've gone through funding struggles and, and getting it to, to be rebuilt and whatnot. Um, I think there's a couple of things that I, I look at and sort of from a policy perspective. And I went and looked at some other cities, federal way and, you know, their right away, you know, it's very common and particularly smaller communities. I mean, we really rely on these incremental improvements that then the city comes back and connects to, to free costs. And so I get it, there is a fairly large frontage, but it's only a small portion of that overall road. But, you know, to have that portion done, you know, uh, and, and then that, that defrayed costs in the future when the city or we get grants to do it. So it makes it more feasible. Um, to do and, and even some of the, the, the waiver requests, you know, that from other cities aren't around the cost. They're really more, you know, is it non-harmonious? Is it, is it uh, um, you know, part of a larger project? Is it, there's topography challenges, you know? I think for me, what sort of tipped it um is the fact that um. They, this was not a surprise. So when they initially went through the process, whether or not they had, you know, they should have been informed or part of the process. Maybe they weren't the final things, but they were definitely at the hearing. And the hearing examiner laid out a set of requirements to, to move forward to this project. And they agreed to them. They didn't take advantage of the opportunity to, to ask for a waiver at that point. Then they waited until the actual opportunity to appeal the hearing examiner had also expired. So it's sort of a double. It's not just once, you know, we didn't know, then we didn't ask for change. And then we actually let the period to lapse and now we're coming back. So it's sort of the third bite at the apple. Um, and I've been part of funding for, for institutions and churches and it is a burden, you know, whether it's a bond issue, whether they have to go back. To the church membership, but you know, that's part of building and rebuilding the project and. Layering on top of that, the insurance piece, if they didn't negotiate a good settlement, again, that's sort of not necessarily a city problem. Other than, you know, I want to acknowledge that they do provide a service to the community and, and I think we, we appreciate that. But that is, doesn't necessarily tip them down. I am concerned about the precedent setting, even with some. Doesn't necessarily tip them down, I am concerned about the precedent setting, even with some of the disaster relief because. You know, we had a church go down in Main Street, we didn't make exceptions for them, we have the mosque education center going in. You know, they could ask for, uh, you know, eliminate frontage improvements, we've got other parcels that are allocated for future. Religious institutions and I think, uh, and then even city of, um, in, uh. Acres of Diamonds, you know, which went through the process and they're building, we granted a waiver on some of the permitting fees, but we didn't add a, a broader. Insurance, so that was a lot being said, and I, sorry if I sort of repeated things that folks had already said, but I'm again, okay with the. Waiver, the building permanent extension, I think that falls within what we've done for comparable institutions in the past, but I'm not. Um, comfortable with either changing the policy or putting the financial burden for what I view as sort of. Several missed opportunities that they had to correct this, you know, prior to this. Uh, city administration, yeah.
So, um, hearing that council largely uh, is in favor of adding or approving the. Uh, oh, okay.
I'm not.
Okay, so given that, I would suggest, I was just thinking about how to move forward. So what I would suggest is during the um, council meeting. Uh, additions or corrections to the agenda, that somebody interested in this. Move to put it on new business, so you all can vote on it, and that's Agenda Bill twenty five forty two.
The Agenda Bill includes this reference to the, the, it includes more than just this fee waiver. I mean, well, the, all the attachments that go along with it. So would our motion have to basically be tailored to approving request number one of the Agenda Bill?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, anyway, I move to, uh.
Oh, uh, so you would do that at the regular council meeting when you get to addition and corrections.
I just wanna point out, um, you know, there's kind of a question of why did they speak up, why did, why did wait till now, I, I think that. A key section in here, I understand everyone's made their decision, but I'm just thinking, on behalf of the applicant, I think they would wanna make it. Clear that a, a primary driver of them bringing this forward is when they, um. Were, I guess, working on this and figuring out how much they would need and all of that, P S C said it would be forty five to fifty five. And now it's a hundred and thirty seven, and so I think they're just shocked, cuz my understanding is there. The settlement didn't even cover the cost, they're having to, regulation is already having to put. A substantial portion of this, and so to have one more thing go over, just kinda tip the balance, I just wanna say. Um, I understand it's really easy and high-bike, they, oh, they should have spoken up sooner, but. They didn't realize the cost, I mean, well, they did realize the cost and they expected it to be in the forty five to fifty five thousand dollar range. So it's substantially more expensive than they expected, so I think that would explain why they're asking now. They got this shockingly surprising, almost crippled cost, um, new estimate, so. I understand it sounds like council's not in favor, but I just wanted to let people know that that's why.
I have one other question, so with regard to the permit fee waiver, we, we build them initially and we did an initial. Okay, so this is duplication of effort, essentially?
It's, let's just, when it expires, you have to re, have to reenact it, so you have to pay a portion, there's a calculation. Through the building department, so help us, let's handle that, but yes. It expires at a certain time, to keep it alive, you can keep it alive for another go-around, but you have to pay a permit fee extension.
But in terms of staff hours, we're not, it, we don't have to do that much work.
I mean, it's continued review, they make changes, which they can anytime, just submit an order, inspections to continue to finish that. We call the I D C International Building Code, be scheduled.
Yeah, okay.
I, I just wanted to explain why I'm not in favor of uh, of waiving the permit or the. Uh, extension fee for the permit, uh, again, I, I'm afraid we're setting a precedent here. Uh, so, for example, we have a mosque, uh, potential going up here in town, uh. What's gonna happen when they, when they uh, uh, run over their time? And their permit expires, so we're gonna also grant them, well, we're gonna almost have to, because we set a precedent here. So potentially any religious uh, institution, potentially any nonprofit. Uh, institution, uh, can point to this, say, look, they didn't have to pay an extension or pay for their extension, we shouldn't, I. So this type of thing, I think, is uh, short-term thinking. And will not do well for the city uh, in, in the future. And even though the bill lists no budgetary impact, there is a budgetary impact. And it's, I, I think it's either two thousand dollars or four thousand dollars, one or the other, that would be coming to the city otherwise, uh, and is not. So there absolutely is maybe not a direct budget, but indirect budget uh, impact in this. Uh, again, which the other taxpayers here in town are paying for. Uh, so it's not something we can just give, you know, give away and it's free, there is an impact. Uh, with, and taxpayers understood, they were paying for that, I doubt they would be, go, please go.
Yeah, I, when you answer that question, one other thing I was gonna ask at the same time is. I know the code says half the permit fee, which is nineteen hundred, but it did say thirty nine hundred, I wanted to see if you could also.
Um, so I will share that from staff's perspective, especially the building. We've waived fees for Acres of Diamonds, this fee too, um, staff is concerned. That we are not doing this based on policy, but by advocacy. And it does make our building official feel uncomfortable. So I think if you pass it tonight, you know, I don't, it's, it's a legislative decision. But I think councils should take seriously doing some policy work, and you can direct staff to help you with that. On these kinds of waiver requests that come in. Because this is two in one year, and I will tell you the new Acres of Diamond request that will surely come in is at least eighty thousand dollars. So if you're going to do these kinds of requests, I think you should have them policy direction, but moving forward.
Council. Another go around, uh, well, just being part of what council member Shaper said, and then city administrator took some of the words right out of my mouth, I. You know, off of what you said, I feel, I still feel okay with this, but pairing that with getting on the calendar, talking about that policy and maybe defining. You know, how we make these decisions, so that there's some kind of criteria, um. Yeah, and I don't know how, how everyone else feels comfort level-wise, if you're still okay moving forward with this for now and then taking that body of work on, or. You know, I feel like this won't survive past, you know, if we're like, no, we wanna develop the policy first, I mean, there's time-wise, that, the amount of time that takes, so. Um, I feel okay with this request, um, and committing to taking on that policy work. Um, but I understand if other people feel the opposite should happen, but.
Yeah, I, I think, and I'm not sure if this is something, if we do some resolution to say we're gonna waive this fee. Like, to identify why this is a unique situation, it's not just because it's a religious institution, it's not, you know, I mean, Acres was because they're providing. Affordable housing, which is something that we need to meet, and we know that often there's gonna have to be. Public investment to make affordable housing happen, in this situation, it was an unexpected. Burning down of the church, you know, it's an unusual, very unusual situation, and so I don't know, you know, it's. To not get ourselves in a situation where every church, every nonprofit expects this, I do not think that the city should be doing that for. The exact reasons that council member Shaper brought forward, but I do feel like this is a very unusual. Situation where it's not a project that the church planned, it, it happens. You know, um, anyway, so I don't know if that's something that is important to state, like, here's the cr-. I mean, maybe setting criteria even makes it, or can you say, this is, I don't know, do you kinda get where I'm coming from, so we aren't setting a precedent to say. Very specific circumstances.
So, um, I guess what I'm asking for is a policy to guide us in making decisions on fee waivers. Yeah, because this, this was sort of an emotional decision on my part, not as so much a irrational. Decision to grant this fee, you know, like, okay, we'll give them this thirty nine hundred, but. In lieu of missing out on the hundred and ninety or whatever, we'll give you this thirty eight hundred, this guy, you feel a little bit better, um, but. So I, I would appreciate.
Yeah.
The, uh, when, when, when they were here, uh. Four months ago, I'm not sure when it was, I don't recall any mention of, uh, a request. For utility, uh, the, the utility or the underground exemption or money, all they mentioned was, and I. I, I guess I, I find that now that we see this, I find that a little strange. Since the fee waiver was either, you know, whatever, four thousand dollars, and utilities were talked about, there's a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And that wasn't on their mind when they were here, I, I guess I don't understand that, maybe, you know, if they were here, they could answer that, that question.
Yeah, I was in that last council meeting, so I didn't hear a public comment.
Well, as Jennifer pointed out in that packet, it does say in that letter that they've been trying to get with. P S C to get a, a quote, and the last one they had, um, they, they just got this new one for a hundred. Because they thought it was gonna be forty four to forty, fifty thousand, something like that. But my other point is I was gonna agree with Amy, I think. I'm okay with waiving the fee this time, because, you know, they're between a rock and a hard place, and, yeah. I mean, a fire, you can't control, um, but I, I do think we need to have some policy going forward.
Man, sorry, my, only fun comment I'll make is, and sort of piggybacks on a comment, but, you know, the, the odd piece about that is, and, and even. Little bit what, um, council member Naplin said is, you know, given that. The inflation, which, again, I wouldn't imagine, be surprised, everything is more expensive, um. Years later, but, but also the ask wasn't for the difference either, it was for the cover of the full amount, so that was an, and another thing that sort of. Put me off a little bit is it wasn't, you know, even like, we expected fifty five and it's now one thirty seven, and could you cover the eighty, or help with the eighty, it was. You know, we initially knew we were gonna have this, and now we want the city to cover all of it or work with it, so, and just another point, but. Um, I think we have some direction at least for that going into the council meeting on, on next steps.
So, can I ask a final? Does anyone here have any experience with, so, I, I mean, I like to make decisions with empathy in mind, um. But I'm also concerned about precedent, and so, um. Does any, do you, do you initiate a nav, or does anyone have any experience in terms of what kind of exposure we would have? Leely in the future, if we did give an empathetic decision now, which sets. A pre, even with all the exceptions that we tag onto it, I mean, how likely are we to be challenged if we don't offer similar exception in the future?
So here's what I would recommend, um, so state law requires that we take general notes of what happens during a council meeting. When you consider this Agenda Bill, I would ha- I would recommend that you ask the clerk. To transcribe what is said about passing this Agenda Bill. And council member Naplin's point, be very clear that this is a unique situation. And for tonight, I think that's probably the best you can do to limit your exposure.
Is it, okay. Yeah, yeah, well, I was, I was a future, you know, future, like.
So we have the mosque coming in, we've got the Jains Society coming in, um. You know, when you think about Main Street, where the mosque is going to be, we've been through three submittals with the mosque on design. And what it looks like on Main Street, and what it looks like to put infrastructure in, the Jains Society is gonna be behind Corey's Cafe. There will be a lot of plummet, thinking about design and improvement to that lot, because it's, you know. Um, an imperative for both of them, a prominent place in the city, so. Being really mindful that, um. We wanna treat all religious institutions equally in the city, no matter what denomination, um. Because, you know, we are invested in the look and feel of those very prominent, um. Developments that are coming.
Um, I'm just thinking of the other religious institutions that, uh, have remodeled or built, Redemption Church, I think we held them to a quite high standard. Um, so I don't think we set a precedent there that I know of, um, also, uh, there was. Fairly significant remodel, uh, um. Timberlake prior to it being Timberlake, and I don't know that we made exception there, so I, I think that there also is precedent of a not doing that, anyway.
Thank you, um, we've got one more item on the agenda, which is, um, an update on A D A self-evaluation. And as Director of the Works, Steve Longshess.
Excuse me, in council, uh, it's kind of a peg team, I was asked to provide a quick summary of some recent. And kind of rash of activities, so a second slide. Uh, between last Monday and this Monday, we received twelve. Full maintenance requests, specific to mostly trip and ball hazards in the town, you have the packet. Uh, item in there, ninety four pages of rhetoric between staff, the system and then the complaint. Just wanted to bring that forward, uh. We are working on our A D A transition plan, and first phase is inventorying all A D A deficiencies throughout the town on public railway. For gutter sidewalk, um, and facilities that public have, so that is occurring at this time, we are not. Of the. Feed and preparedness to go out and attack everyone that comes in, so we are responding. Make that clear, we are putting things on our list, but we will also have a citywide list that we are gonna hammer out together. And make policy and how to mitigate it, because the twenty deficiencies that have been shared in the last week with one person. Um, will exponentially grow when our inventory is turned in. And then we will have, again, a list, we will prioritize, we will figure out which things we're attacking, we went through this last year with our. Safety audit with W C I A, you know, how do you treat calls, how you treat trips? Spray, grind, remove, replace, like, one patch panel near an A D A ramp is five grand, wow, that's just. Ten by ten, replace the panel, and then you gotta bring it up standard, so there was a lot that goes into this. So if you wanna share and remind folks, if you are hearing anything, uh, we are addressing it, we are, we are not gonna be able to respond, we have responded kindly. Hey, we're going through an entire A D A inventory, we'll have a plan that we'll be working for next summer, um. But we're spending, you know, quarter million dollars on this process, so we're not gonna circumvent everything, we will do our best, um, so next slide, John. Uh, and, and some of the, some of the causes are nature, right, you, you see Main Street, these trees, as they grow, they are heaving. So the rings are made in the center to come out as the tree gains its curve and get bigger, well. These like their spot really well, and all the iron for most of the trees in downtown that have not been replaced yet. Is going to have to come out, so we're getting to a point, and, and you can see in the middle, uh, picture. These tree itself, that ring engraved is already gone, and it is heaving the sidewalk to the two, you know, four inches, so. And, and not that every issue is an issue, so this one, you know, in the middle, you would argue, hell, look. You do, you do get a rise of one and twelve for a certain distance, so it may not meet the definition for a failure, even though it looks bad. But you normally are walking off the curb into the land of travel in a fire lane, not at a crosswalk. So, I mean, there's things that our insurance carrier helped out, you know, how do you weigh what you're gonna repair and, and how you're gonna mitigate it? So just cuz everything comes in too, doesn't mean we gotta jump on a highway, um, but yeah, uh, we're going to have to weigh, are we going to start to. Trees out the main street, and then we're gonna have nice, nice public outreach element to handle that, so.
And that's the tech theme, I, where I come in, um. We can't, so, and we, I think we got seven more in the last forty eight hours, um. We can't go out and tackle these without a communication strategy, yes, for instance, a solve might be to rip out that tree. I cannot admit it to the community outrage of us starting to rip out street trees. So this is part of a, we need to be thoughtful, coordinated. Have the recommendation from an ADA plan because we are also responsible to our insurance company. And our insurance company expects us to prioritize and work with them, so our insurer also doesn't want us to go out and start. Have hazardly fixing things that the community brings forward, it has to be part of the thoughtful organized plan. And with good community communication, we have to get, we don't wanna go start ripping out trees without telling the community why we're doing it.
Uh, councilor Shaffer, was was there a specific organization or people that?
The packet has research components request compliant persons who doesn't know.
Okay, okay, I mean, I I like that idea of addressing, you know, these these sounds for obvious reasons, but, uh. We.
Did have a sort of a general question to inquiry, cause I, you know, noticed it was one, one person, and obviously I knew. The city was going through this exercise to to identify from that's. Under the ADA Act, and I did not go back and look at the act, I mean, is there any, you know, if if they all come from one person versus you get. Multiple companies from different individuals, I assume that figures somehow into the weighting, or that's still. Still, at the end of the day, it comes down to impact analysis cost, and then you put it through a rigor.
The in the the weighting and the policy we work on as a, as a group, right, it's going to take dollars and, you know, where that comes from. Um, that is going to be set, and we're gonna make choices that aren't gonna solve our problems, we're probably gonna do our best to mitigate highest risk. Work with our insurance carriers, make sure like, hey, we're getting this out of council, we haven't passed it yet, here, we're going through the process. What do you think, what do you see, what do you see as most defensible, because a trip and fall, uh, it can be painful. It can cause injury, and it can cost money, so, um, that's. Yeah, it's, there will be no perfect solution because you won't have that money, and even if you did, you can't do them all on separate, right? So it'll be some sort of in-between tool, or we have tools that are exposed now, we have grinding machines that can nip off. You know, an inch or less and and make things, you know, graded, compliant, um, the standards change. You know, as you pour concrete sidewalks, panel by panel, there's a seam between them. Belt strip, typical, that is now non-compliant. Brand new, that makes it non-compliant, so we have to also adjust our standards, uh. Yeah, ADA um, combination and slopes, faults, oh, that it's, it's a lot.
Let's mollify, I, I go back at, do puddles really fall with the perfume of ADA in the whole street?
Technically, the state of Washington, right, you don't have to cross, as the chief will tell you, at every intersection, you can cross. In theory, maybe. We would obviously prioritize marked intersections or actual intersection, even unmarked, over mid-block puddle. But yes, and and. From what we have have submitted, these aren't seminal, like, I tripped and fell, like, hey, I found this, so here you go, hey, I found this, here you go.
Not that we want anybody to.
No, 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 I get that.
Thought you'd come as for other council members. Um, any items for the good of the order this evening?
Yeah, I have one, um, as you said. Well, I don't know if it's for the good of the order, but I was curious as to what the cross progress is with respect to, um. Finding a new community director. Working on that.
City administrative.
Uh, so in the next council packet, uh, early at the council meeting, I am putting together a staffing plan for you all to consider. And if we make progress on uh at our next council meeting, I will begin.
So we got an active community director now?
No, a bunch of that are kind of filling in, um, and we have B H C who is our on-call consultant for planning. Uh, supervising all of the, I'm supervising the department with the help of Stephen Laura Sound and some stuff that I don't have expertise in. Um, but B H C is supervising the planning team where, um. There were required peer reviewers, supervisor review of certified planner.
About ten minutes, I don't know if there's a. Short council report probably, or, because a city administrator probably take longer than ten minutes, you just report probably take more, longer than ten minutes, how do you look through any outlook? Porch that.
Uh, yeah, I can go ahead a couple things, so a couple weeks ago, I went to, uh, let me open this up, say notes. A couple weeks ago, I went to the uh C TAC, had an event for local elected officials to kind of give an overview on. Changes and what's going on there, um, and so a couple of things that I thought were interesting, it's it's the twelfth largest airport. Uh, the twelfth busiest airport uh in the country, um, and it's also one of the smallest major airports in the country. And one of their, one of their um greatest challenges in terms of expansion is it's landlocked. It's already developed all the way around, and so that was built to service about thirty million, thirty-three million people, something like that, up thirty million people. They're already servicing around fifty million people, and so. That's why it feels like such a disaster when you go there, um, as they, as they. Look at what they can do, you know, they've they've had kind of this long list of changes and improvements that they've wanted to make. Um, they decided to do, to do them all at once since FIFA is coming, and they wanna try to have everything done at the same time, otherwise they would have kind of progressively done it to release. You know, reduce the burden, uh, but they're just, you know, great pain, great gain is is their goal, they have put together a plan, um. Environmental approvals already have gone through, it looks like, and they're looking to build a second terminal. They have some space and they're kind of, you know, expanding in a few interesting ways, um, so anyway, uh. Their goal for this event was just to share information with other public folks, so they could share the information with their constituents, so people know what's going on at C TAC, so that was one thing. Um, the other thing I wanted to mention is last week I went to Anachi for the emergency management forum for A W A, uh, A W C. And similar interesting statistics, so depending on what time period you look at. Washington is either the fourth or the second most prone to emergency disasters of of all the states, and so we're just, we're likely to run into issues. Um, and so. You know, I I, it was, it was a really informative day, there was a lot of really good information, I I took. Relief when I came back and I looked at our fund balances, fund balances and saw, because that was one of the things that really reiterated at the forum, was that. You gotta have an emergency fund, you have to protect against this, and most funds for disaster relief and recovery, they emphasize recovery, because like. Relief is when it's happening in the moment, but then recovery is the year after, when you're trying to fix whatever happened, um, the most of those funds are reimbursable. And so you still have to have money upfront to pay for whatever it is, and and you're gonna need to be able to act fast. Uh, anyway, it was an interesting forum, and I'm gonna just now having attended that leaf through our emergency. Plan, just to kind of reconcile what I saw versus what it might be, but they also send after, you know, materials, so a week following the event. So when I get those, all four of those over, and you can share them with the with the team, if if relevant.
Yeah, no, that'd be great, I'm sure we could appreciate that.
Yeah, yeah, be good, so that was it.
I think you're like, missed the, we've got the pick meeting, we're also bringing the updates for that to the next meeting. Uh, but with that, we can actually dismiss a couple of minutes early and give folks some time. Before we are convening at seven o'clock, uh, so, um, it was at six forty eight P M.
No, no.
I'd like to call the Tuesday, October 7th, Duval City Council meeting in the quarter. If you had all please write it during your class. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Certainly, please take the roll.
Mayor Okerlander.
Here.
Mayor Frithman Mercer.
Here.
Councilmember Olens.
Here.
Councilmember Shaker.
Here.
Councilmember McHenry.
Here.
Councilmember Supple.
Here.
Councilmember Knapplin.
Here.
Councilmember Kufel.
Here.
We have a forum. All right, and with that, do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda? Councilmember Knapplin?
Yeah, I'd like to ask that we pull off Agenda Bill 2543, Reaffirmation of Purchase of Public Property. That's one request to remove from the consensus, and then I would like to add to the agenda, Part One of the Request Review from Adventure Community Church and add that to the agenda.
Okay, so clarification, you're just wanting the reaffirmation of purchase of public property to be on the main agenda? Okay?
And then the other one, another new item, which is something we discussed in the House. That would also be a new agenda item.
Twenty-five forty-two. Number four, section one.
All right, with that, do we have a motion to approve this evening's agenda?
The move.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And with that, we have two proclamations this evening. The first one is Hindu Heritage Month, and I'll go ahead and read that into the record. Whereas, Hindu Heritage Month is a time to recognize and celebrate the rich cultural traditions, spiritual teachings, and profound contributions of Hindu Americans, whose heritage is deeply rooted in thousands of years of history, philosophy, and art. And whereas, the Hindu community has greatly enriched the social, cultural, educational, and economic fabric of our nation and the city of Duval, fostering greater understanding, diversity, and unity within our community. And whereas, Hindu teachings empathize universal values such as compassion, respect for all living beings, the pursuit of knowledge, harmony with nature, and the interconnectedness of humanity, values that resonate deeply across cultures and faith. And whereas, Hindu festivals such as Diwali, Holi, Navaratri, and others are joyous celebrations that bring families, neighbors, and communities together, inspiring mutual understanding and appreciation of traditions that have endured for millennia. And whereas, during Hindu Heritage Month, we honor not only the history and traditions of Hinduism, but also the many contributions of Hindu Americans in fields such as science, medicine, technology, business, education, arts, and civic leadership. And whereas, by recognizing Hindu Heritage Month, the city of Duval reaffirms its commitment to fostering inclusion, celebrating diversity, and building a welcoming community where the traditions and contributions of all residents are honored and valued. Now therefore, I, Amy Okerlander, Mayor of the city of Duval, do hereby proclaim October 2025 as Hindu Heritage Month in the city of Duval, and encourage all residents to learn more about Hindu traditions, celebrate the diverse cultures that enrich our city, and join in recognizing the positive impact of Hindu Americans on our shared history and future. All right. So when you go to your picture. Do you want to join up front? Yeah. We want all council, all council members to join.
Yes, that would be great. Well, maybe you guys this way. I can get over there.
We're going to go this way.
Let's hear it for him.
Two, three. Great. Do you think? Thank you.
Just one more. Hear it again.
One, two, three. Great.
Thank you, my uncle.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the send. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Can we have a little? Thank you. No, that's fine.
Oh, yes, please do. Go ahead. Thank you.
I don't know whether I need mic or not, but then, thank you very much. So I would say, Honorable Mayor, I mean, Okerlander, esteemed member of the city council, all the guests available here, and my fellow resident of Duval. First of all, sincere thanks from all of us for honoring us and then celebrating this month as Hindu Heritage Month. What, there are a few things which I want to call out as a community, that I know that we are pretty new in city of Duval, but that does not mean, does not mean that we are not running community-related events in other cities. So, we are running food banks, we are supporting few schools, Advent School District, we are also supporting Sultan School District. So there are few seniors who cannot afford their education, and then they are running lunch debt, which basically, like, force them not to get a certificate from school and pursue their degree. So we are supporting them running their education seamlessly. We are running few food banks in the city of Bellevue, city of Samar, city of Redmond. And this particular year, we celebrated Holy Hair, that was the very first time we celebrate the color of festival. And we promise you that we'll come together, collaborate with each other, to celebrate multiple India-related events. For example, this particular month, we have the biggest festival of India, which is a festival of light. We used to call that as Diwali. So, what we want to mention here is that, as a new resident of Duval, we want to come together, collaborate with each other, with your guidance and all the mentorship, to celebrate all these festivals. And also, want to giving back to community, like, support food banks here, so that we can give back to community feel, like, inclusiveness by being a part of this community together. And first, thank you very much for honoring us and then celebrating this month as Hindu Heritage Month. Thank you very much.
Second proclamation we have this evening is for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas, breast cancer is the most diagnosed cancer among women in the United States and touches the lives of families and communities across the nation. Whereas, an estimated one in eight women will be diagnosed with breast cancer in her lifetime, and while men can also be affected, women bear a disproportionate impact in this disease. And whereas, early detection through regular screenings and increased awareness of risk factors significantly improves outcomes and saves lives. And whereas, advances in research, treatment, and prevention have given hope to millions of survivors and their loved ones, yet continued support and advocacy remain essential to ending the devastating toll of breast cancer. And whereas, Breast Cancer Awareness Month serves as an opportunity for our community to come together, to honor those we have lost, celebrate survivors, support individuals currently battling breast cancer, and encourage everyone to prioritize their health and well-being. And whereas, the city of Duval recognizes the importance of education, advocacy, and solidarity, and encourages all residents to learn more, schedule screenings, and extend compassion to those affected by this disease. Now therefore, I, Amy Okerlander, Mayor of the city of Duval, do hereby proclaim October 2025 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Duval, and encourage all residents, businesses, and community organizations to join us in supporting increased awareness, promoting prevention, and fostering hope for a future without breast cancer. Now we'll move on to comments from the audience, and I will read the, thank you for the expanded version, Mayor Porten, read the rules into the record for the audience. During the designated public commentary period within city council meeting, individuals are allotted a three-minute speaking duration, while representatives of organizations may address the council for up to five minutes before presenting kindly disclosure, full name, and city of residence. Each speaker and all remarks shall be addressed to the city council of the body and not to individual members of council or staff. It is strongly advised by the city to submit verbal comments in written form to expedite subsequent correspondence. Written comments must be received by the city clerk's office by noon on the meeting day, addressed to P.O. Box 1300, Duval, Washington 98019, or deposited at the city hall drop box located at 15535 Main Street Northeast or by email. Please be aware that the city council, its boards, and its commission solely entertain public comments from attendees present at the meeting in person. The council does not accept handouts or printed material during public commentary sessions. Information intended for the mayor or the city council shall be directed to the city clerk, who will disseminate it following the submitter's instructions. Upon receipt, the city clerk will receive written public comments and subsequently furnish them to the city council or the relevant board or commission. However, it's important to note that written comments will not be orally presented during the council or applicable board or commission meetings. Any written comments received after the noon deadline for written comments will be shared with the council at the next council meeting as part of the city clerk's report. With that, do we have anyone that would like to provide public comments?
We have a couple folks that wrote "maybe" for public comments, but I suspect that they may have left.
Oh, I don't care. Oh, oh. It was on the next column, I wasn't clear on all problems like that.
Okay, so, one of the ladies. Then if you would like to, first, if you would like to provide your name and information, we will figure out which one you are and move from there.
I'm Ellen Wong.
Okay, you're welcome.
My name is Ellen Wong, I reside in Redmond. And I only put "maybe" down because I wasn't sure if our, under the new business, if we would need to engage in that conversation. So, I didn't have a comment for the public comment. I think I put it on the other column, isn't I?
Um, it is, um, you just request to speak at a public hearing after no, as maybe speaking during public comments, you could know, but you do, you're allowed to speak to anything on the agenda, so if you're on the agenda now, it would be the time to provide public comment.
Okay, I wasn't clear if I heard if the two requests that we had submitted from Adventure Community Church, if both of those are being considered tonight, or just one of them is. So I guess my request on that would be that we could request or discuss the second request also regarding the undergrounding, and
you should ask her a motion to waive the rules for public comment, I can answer.
Can I have, ask council a motion to waive the rules for public comments? The city administrator can provide an answer to the question.
Senator.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes.
Hi, good evening. Hi. So during the council of the whole, the council considered the request, both the first request for the building permit extension fee waiver, as well as the second request, which had two parts, one of which was a waiver of the underground utility requirement, and the second, and/or the city contributing to the cost, the 137,000, the cost of the PSC charge. Council has decided to only move forward on request number one, which is the waiver of the building permit fee. And then, following this meeting, staff will connect back with you to give you more detail about what happened at Council Hall tonight.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else that would like to provide public comments this evening? Dean Nye, we'll go ahead and move on to approval of our consent agenda. May I have a motion approved this evening's consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Moving on to scheduled items, I don't have anything for the public benefit to report this evening, so we'll go ahead and move straight to the city administrator's report.
Good evening, council, mayor, staff, members of our community, thank you for being here this evening. Tonight, we'll give the city administrator a report, and we will go ahead and start with the public works update with Director Lajewski.
Good evening, mayor, councils, staffs, and city Lajewski Public Works. The healthy dose of public works tonight, so sorry, I'm a little anxious. For quick update, the RFP, which are the rapid, rapid retaining work, which begins at Churchill Elementary, which is 3163rd, are in. They are functioning, so we're excited for that. This is three parts of the overlay project this year. So, 124 was the scheduled bid amount, we're at 130, so we're 5% over, but the whole, the other two parts is about 9,000 under total, so, that said, all within contract limits, next slide. Fun fact, all of these rapid flashing props blocks that we do have, they actually count. They have a small computer inside that counts the actual number of uses, since that's installation last summer. Cherry Street, which is both Cherry and Rain, are on Main Street, 9,600 and 6,500 pushes. So that's kind of some interesting statistics, and by the way, if you hold, if you hold the button with the cross long enough, it'll tell you which street you're on, as in the ADA feature. So, I'm sure you all do that now. Be next to it in the winter, those are solar driven, so, there you go, next slide. We didn't do a proclamation, but it is Stormwater Awareness Week, so six, three, call, but my bad, sorry, John.
We did a proclamation.
We're ahead of the game. Yeah, but we did some, our Stormwater Act, she sent items out to the groups that have been spray painting the logos and words along the catch basins through town, we've had quite a few of those happening, so that's great. And then staff doing the same, a little bit of Photoshop for Matthew there, he's like to climb it up, but, yeah, that's too garmin. Next slide. You have, just for us to know, not that we're participating or involved, but the siren for the toll-damn evacuation warning system is back in operation, they've been testing it, so there is a first warning test, the number first, and for those who are kind of new, like, this used to happen every Wednesday at noon incarnation, and then they have their false alarms, and they had several years of working with Seattle and King County Community Committee, and so anyway, just a little heads up that that's back and begin its regular operations, so then what we do is the testing, it will be, if you're signed up through King County EM and or our nation's social media avenues, they'll be doing some color reds for first time a month in social media sharing for the testing network, her. Next slide. Just a heads up, will be a lot of activity tomorrow, they're paving the Rio Vista neighborhood, which is the 143rd east of Third. Through the development process, we do not allow final as an asphalt until 80% buildout or greater, so that way we know there's any failure spots in the, in the road suddenly, they prepare that, or prepare broken concrete curbing and sidewalks and any other failures, and then they pave, and then they're moving on to their bomb release. Next slide. Just a quick note, we didn't have any pickups thankfully, but we are working towards the water, the 2.2 million gallon reservoirs, interior and exterior coating, as well as our pump evaluation and mixing project for next uh, interior and exterior coating, as well as our pump evaluation and mixing project for next summer. So, uh, a lot of the screen here, the left is an aerial plan view of the tank, the big round part, and the blue thing is the pump house. Um, to the right, that is the schematic of the three pumps that exist in yellow, and then the green, uh, element, which is blank. So, the kind of like the treatment plant, the water systems, uh, guts were all built to be expanded on very simply. So all the plumbing, in a sense, is in the ground, we'll be working on assessing the current, uh, pump systems, and then adding a fourth pump for capacity needs, that next slide. And then these are just some of the features that are associated with the tank, control valves underground, hearing underground helps us control flow and understand what's going on and what we're delivering to the system and community, and if we have, um, issues, we know pretty well what our normal flows are, as well as high flows and why we might be having them at, let's say, five a.m. during school day in the summer with, that's the school district, you know, hearing, so we can tell what's going on pretty easily. Uh, so next slide, then going into the tank. Oh, I got, uh, that is just showing you the pumps, um, that was kind of in the front slide, so we have a thirty-horse and two sixty horsepower pumps in, in system operations now, we'll be adding likely a, another sixty horse. During the project, so next slide. And this is actually in the reservoir, so on the left image, you see the bright moon kind of shine on the left, that's an actual bolted up port of entry. You have two of those on either side, or a hatch and ladder system get down into the tank. So we pull the tank offline, we had our engineers inside to assess the tank. Uh, we also did a video inspection during, um, uh, our routine cleaning, so we have lots of information. We contacted the original builder, who still builds tanks, uh, they were, we tried to reply to replace and buy some gaskets and some bolts. Uh, they were shocked that our tank had not been coated in or out, and was in the state it was. They're blown away, this went into, it was almost thirty years to the year, uh, uh, installation. So T.E. Bailey built it, uh, I think that'd be ever area. So the tank's in great shape, uh, we'll be working on what our interior coating needs will be, but it's just a little, it's not staining per se, but the surfacing wears off, which is why you see a brown, I won't call it a brown color, it's more of the white paint diminishing over time. Um, that's kind of where our normal operation line is between seven and twelve feet, and that's twenty feet tall inside, uh, to the edge, not to the top of the tank, but just taller, uh, next slide. And then a reminder this weekend is our free community cleanup event, uh, nine to one at Taylor Landing. Um, no refrigerators or freezers, no electronics, and yes, a hot water tank does qualify as an acceptable appliance. Um, so that's going on this weekend, hopefully it's smooth, uh, seams that we should, shrinking every year a little bit, because most people do a good job of burying their yard out, now it's just little things here and there, but yeah. At nine to one on Saturday. And then next slide. I'm done, any questions?
Questions for your public?
Is, uh, old fencing allowed at the yardways?
Pretty much, you would normally put it in your green, gray, or blue, and yes. So, yeah, they will take, so that construction is celebrated.
But no one should be untreated.
Untreated board.
Um, okay, well, I am going to give the community development, uh, update, so first a few slides from our building division update on some of the projects that I think folks are interested in. Corey's Cafe, um, the upper sitting has been permitted, and, um, we've been working together to kind of get through that patio approach that, uh, is at Corey's Cafe, if you've noticed, they've added a lot of flowers, it's very pretty, and pets, pets are welcome and approved by the city out on patio. And then, uh, update, Duval Tavern went through some kitchen and storage renovations. That expansion is nearing completion and, uh, has passed through the building, uh, permanent process. Next slide. And then we just, yeah, what's today, today's Tuesday, yes? Um, last Thursday, we issued the, um, final approval for the Yellow Hat Wine Tasting Room. So there's going to be a wine tasting room in that building that's at the, um, Parker Road. So, uh, we'll have a new business here in the city doing wine tasting at that location, so we're really excited to welcome that business into the city. Next slide. Um, okay, so some current development updates. So, well, we talked a little bit earlier in the meeting about the mosque, the mosque is scheduled to go to design review uh, at the planning commission on either November twelfth or December tenth, we're just working through that final date and figuring out what, uh, meeting date will work best for the mosque. The Main Street Development, which is, uh, the development that's kind of across from Safeway, that is scheduled for a public hearing before the hearing is seminar on October thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, so you recall that you all agreed to an extension of that project, they have worked very expeditiously following that extension to get their work in, they have a beautiful, really nice, beautifully laid out submittal, they've worked diligently, and then we're getting, um, in front of the hearing examiner. Uh, the Ridge Big Lot Five commercial, I wrote to them today asking for a meeting with Toll Brothers to discuss receiving a re-submittal of their application. Um, we provided comments to the original submittal back in June, we haven't heard since, so I'm going to ask, or have asked for a meeting for them, uh, with them to get more specific details on their commercial development plans for that space at Toll Brothers. And then Acres of Diamonds staff provided comments on, on the application on September seventeenth. So at this point, we just look forward to their response, I'm going to re-submittal on their application. Next slide. Um, so long-range planning, um, you've been through a bunch of meetings where, uh, Director Tom has brought up that we had a large uh, body of work in long-range planning, I've been working with the team to set some deadlines for getting that work done. Um, today, we had really good discussion, and I'm happy to report, we have some, uh, plans to move that work forward, so, revision to permit processing, that's DMC, uh, fourteen oh eight, that will be prepped and ready to go to city council, either the second meeting in December, if we have one, or the first meeting in January. Uh, that permit processing work is a state mandate. Um, it dictates how many days we have to approve certain kinds of permits, and so, um, we are, uh, by fiat, complying with the state law, but we need to revise our code to match the state law. Uh, revision to the sign code, so council has seen the sign code a couple times, and that deals with the right-of-way and commercial speech and temporary signage like A-boards and those things that you stick in the yard or stick in the median, so you've seen a couple iterations of that, we are working on finalizing that code update, and you'll have it, uh, probably at the end of January, beginning of February. We're in a good spot, there are a lot of constitutional issues with the sign code update, um, but we think we'll be ready to present that to council. Before we would present it to council, though, we would like to present a draft of it and do a workshop with our business community, particularly our realtors, to get their sense of, you know, what the state law is, what the constitutional issues are, where we have some discretion, um, so that before we get too deep in it, we've done a really nice shove of communicating with our interested parties on the sign code update. Uh, co-living and parking, these are both a package of state law required changes unless legislative change, legislative session. Those will be before city council in February, March of twenty twenty-six. Uh, the city will release the RFP for design standards, uh, the municipal code in fourteen thirty-four. There's a bunch of, again, changes in state law that are required. Uh, I plan to issue that RFP in December for work to commence in the New Year on the sign code, or the design standard provisions. And then finally, we're in the midst of working on our critical areas update, this is required by the Growth Management Act, um, we have planned adoption at the end of March, um, for the critical areas. Next slide. Uh, turn over to clerk's office.
Good evening, mayor, council, members of the public, John, I'm the city clerk. Um, so we've been doing first trans of interviews for, uh, permit specialists, we actually had one today, two tomorrow, three on Friday. Um, separately, uh, Deputy City Clerk and I will be attending a conference, it's a one-day conference for the, I can never remember what it is, Washington Public Records Officer, full conference, um. It has some really interesting topics that I think are very germane to the type of work we do, and, um, box again continues, we've been finding some pretty interesting stuff in, uh, um, when we go through the boxes, but also we want to create a process that will hopefully, um, that ideally will be emulated, uh, for many, many, many years to come. So, uh, never a dull moment at City Hall, thank you.
Next slide. Um, okay, so, we are expanding programs and vendors for Light of Duval. Um, so we did a call for vendors for Light of Duval because I think I've come over the course of the last few years, Rita and I have a vision for Light of Duval that is kind of, um, a holiday market, um, so that we're adding more to Light of Duval for families and visitors to come and buy things that they would, um, give as gifts. And so in the past, it was more nonprofit focused, but this year so far, we have, and every year we get a few more, but right now, I think we're at eight craft vendors already who want to come to Light of Duval to, um, and, and local crafters, which we're really excited about. We're also going to have a gingerbread house competition this year for Light of Duval. We have some, uh, Duval business, businesses, um, and celebrity judges that have agreed to, um, not only donate gingerbread houses for families who might have a difficult time buying one, um, but also to judge the entries, so we're excited about that, just continuing to make Light of Duval a special event for the community. Um, we will be sending out a press release soon, highlighting our murals that we've done so far, and then promoting the remaining two murals in our biennial budget, or our biennial art plan, which is the Night Sky mural up at Big Rock that, um, I'm hoping to use as a push to become Night Sky designated. And then the second one, the stairs here at, um, the visitor center, which is native plants of the Snohomie Valley, um, decorating those stairs. So those will go out, we have the cultural commission meeting on the thirteenth this month, and then following that meeting, we'll release, um, a press release along with a call for artists for those two murals. And it's just a really exciting time to have art in the city, we've done such tremendous amount of work, so kudos to everyone involved. Uh, tomorrow, I'm meeting with Duval Days organizers uh, to share our feedback and to offer suggestions for next year for a successful Duval Days. Uh, planning is underway for our New Year's Eve celebration at Depot Park. Uh, this was, uh, included as a new event in the Biennial Art Plan. Uh, we're going to plan it like six to nine, seven to nine, so the New York City ball drop, not the West Coast ball drop, um, but we're going to have the campfire out, we'll do smores and fun activities there for, mainly directed at family, but anybody who wants to come and be near the campfire on New Year's Eve and watch the ball drop. East Coast. And then, uh, we applied for the T-Mobile grant, uh, last week to support, uh, infrastructure improvements in Taylor Landing, um, that would hopefully, uh, help to augment some of the infrastructure needs of the Duval Farmers Market. Next slide. Just a couple pictures of some of the cultural commission projects that we've been working on. Um, we're starting this, uh, actually, I think Rita was out with one of our parks, um, employees on Friday, laying the rainworks at Cherry Valley and Cedar Crest, we have a bunch more coming. And so you'll start seeing those messages throughout the city when it rains. Um, so we're pretty excited about that. And then, uh, and everybody who came to the greetings from Duval Community Pink Day, thank you. We had eighty people on Saturday who came to put their hands in the art. Um, it was a really nice event, I wish I would have been there, I was tracing around Charleston, South Carolina when that was going on, which was also amazing, but, um, this was just a great project, and, uh, thank you to everyone involved. And then finally, Chief, you may recognize yourself here. I mean, it's almost here, so if you'd like to donate candy or non-candy item, uh, for kids with allergies, please drop it by City Hall, um, by Wednesday. We're gonna, um, as we do every year, participate in trick-or-treating in front of City Hall, it's a Friday this year, so I imagine we're going to get some pretty good foot traffic this year, um, this is, might be my favorite thing all year. Um, it's really, really fun, so, uh, if you want to come and trick-or-treat with us, then hand out candy, please let us know, we'd be happy to have you, but let us know in advance in case you all have four. And then with that, I'm. I will, any questions?
So, I just have one teeny tiny question, I, since you're expanding, um, on Duval, we've been on the line on Friday evening.
Yeah, it's still going to be Friday evening.
Any other questions for some of you? All right, um, seeing none, we'll move on to council reports, does council, are there any council members that have business to report on? Council member Van Henry?
Just wanted to point out, um, that we had our Snohomie Valley Governments Association, so S V G A meeting was hosted by Duval on twenty-fourth, I think it was twenty-fourth of September, um, so just, it was a well-attended meeting, um, I had to run that meeting because Snohomie Tribal Council Member Jolene Williams couldn't be there, um, but it was well-attended, and thanks to the staff for coordinating the food and just making it a great event, um, made it just really nice. Um, and then, sorry, I've been behind, I need to add this to our calendar, but, um, we have a council chat scheduled this Thursday, the ninth, from ten to eleven a.m. at Rustic Cabin Coffee, and I think it's myself, Councilmember Olin, and Kufelt had reached out about, um, being able to attend that. So, and I, I'll send a follow-up email, I, I know I had emailed out, again, we have one next month as well, I can't remember off the top of my head when it is, but I'll follow up on that, I'll do a better job, that's all I have.
Thank you. Any other council members? All right, um, seeing none, we'll move on to our first presentation this evening, um, and I'm pleased to introduce Dr. Eric Murray, who is the president of Cascadia College, to provide us, uh, our yearly update on the state of the college, Dr. Murray, welcome.
Oh, good to see you all again, it's that time of year, I believe that I have a presentation coming up pretty soon, thanks for turning this way. I think this happened last year, you were the first city council I'm talking to, I'm through all city councils in our service district and all school district boards, so you're my trial run, any feedback is appreciated. And as most of you know, Cascadia College located in Bothell and Redmond serves the Riverview School District, the Washington School District, and North Shore School District, hence, City of Duval is a major client, I would call it, of ours, who are aiming to serve the youth of this community. So, this year, I actually left our twenty-fifth anniversary slide deck intact a little bit, because I wanted to start off by saying, we just finished twenty-five years of existence, and we are doing better today than we have ever done in the entire twenty-five years, we have more students on campus than we've never had, we've bounded back from COVID strongly, we have a great relationship with the University of Washington Bothell, and we're financially sound, so we are starting year twenty-six in a really good place, next please. Well, again, talk about successes and challenges, and then I want also to spend a brief moment on colleges' perspective on equity and inclusion, so in terms of successes, next. We are, again, up in enrollment, so historically, last couple of years, seventeen percent in twenty-three, twenty percent in twenty-four, and now twelve percent, which means we now have almost five thousand students on campus, and again, during COVID, we were down to less than two thousand students, so we have come full circle. Also, in the state, there's an initiative called Guided Pathways, and what that means is we tend to try to move our students into one of seven meta-majors. So you could be in the life sciences, but then you have the subsets of life science majors, or you could be in the humanities, and you have a subset, or those kinds of things, and it involves intrusive advising, it involves, uh, helping students pick their path, and the state measures the success in guided pathways on eight different metrics, and Cascadia ranks number one in three of those metrics, and are in the top five in the other metrics out of thirty-four community colleges in the state. So we have a higher retention rate than any other community college in the state, and over ninety percent of our students sticking with us through the first year, the national average is forty-eight percent, so being at ninety percent is a good place. We have the highest number of students who transfer, uh, percentage-wise into the University of Washington or any other major university. And not only that, when our students apply, we have the highest rate of acceptance into the University of Washington. So Bellevue College may send more students, a fewer percentage of their total, but our students are more likely to get into UW than, uh, Bellevue students, as an example. And we point directly to our co-location. And we point directly to our co-location with UW Bothell for that. And then we have the highest rate of getting students from. Non pre-college math to college level math. Than any of the other colleges in the state, and we're right behind in English. So we're moving students from wherever they. Come into the front door with us up to that level of college and university expectation really well. I pull my staff on what they believe some of the greatest successes are. We offer a lot of student support in terms of emergency grants. We have. Any student who needs a laptop, we we. Loan out hundreds of laptops every year to students who are in need of a laptop. We have our ventry program called Cascadia Scholars. We have a food pantry that continues to grow and grow and grow in its usage. And you have to qualify for that usage, so we know that more students without resources are trying to come to college. We also have invested in a lot of student desired resources, meaning our bachelors in computer uh computer science. Little side note there, people have been asking me lately, well. Meta, Microsoft, Google, they're all laying people off. Well, what that means is all of the rest of us who really need tech qualified people. Are gonna start getting more of those people and the jobs are still out there. But people are just now are not seeking to go to the biggies. They're seeking to come to all of the rest of us. And the need and demand for computer science majors is huge. In cities and municipalities and nonprofits and small businesses, so we continue to invest in that. We have on campus housing through University of Washington Bothell. Any student who wants to come to us and live on campus can, whether it's Cascadia or UW Bothell. Students can enroll for two quarters, not just one quarter at a time, but they, and that's why I think we have a high retention rate is they. They enroll and like, well, I'm gonna pick my winter quarter classes as well. And then when I get to winter quarter, then they can pick spring and fall, and we keep them kind of on the leash to get them through to completion. And interestingly, we have this thing that our students are calling the non-AI touch. Artificial intelligence, talking to a computer, not talking to a person, chat. None of that is personal and our students are creating in-person connection. Both with each other and with our staff and faculty. And so that's noted by our student surveys as a really big positive about Cascadia. We are so small that we can get. In-person touch. So those are some of our successes. Next, please. Challenges, we still have one more building, our fifth building in our master plan, and we didn't get it this last legislative season. But I do appreciate the council writing a letter of support for that when we needed it. That was uh very well received, and I was just told on Friday that it looks like in the supplemental. State budget that the building is gonna be funded. So we are making plans. We have state legislators coming to visit next week. In order to start getting ready to to break ground on July first. I think for all of us, the constantly changing federal landscape is a challenge that we are having to navigate. As a fun example. All of our grants and things are in the Department of Education. Well, we were told last week that, oh. Department of Education is not gonna manage those. We've moved all of your money to the Department of Labor. Okay, so we looked at our bank account in the Department of Education and it was zero. When we looked at our banking, our new bank account in the Department of Labor. And it was zero. And we didn't know where our hundreds of thousands of dollars went. It took about a week for that to eventually show up in the ledger and for us to turn around and draw that money down. So those kinds of things we are. Dealing with on a constant weekly basis. I think we're all gonna be aware that the state economy is dwindling. The revenue forecast is down hundreds of millions. That's gonna affect my budget. And that's a challenge that we're gonna have to face and. Out of the thirty four community colleges. About four or five of them are struggling to the point where they're gonna have to consider closure because they're not getting students coming to them like we are. We're not in that space and uh largely supported by our running. From all three school districts. Every community college has seen an explosion of students in high school going to community colleges through running start. I think parents have finally recognized that as the best financial deal around, and you can get a ton of credits doing that. Unfortunately, this goes back to federal landscape. Our international student population is dwindling. Students can't get renewals and visas. One of our biggest feeder countries was put on the Orange Travel Ban List, which means they can't come anymore. I'm losing more than a million dollars in the fact that I can't. Bring in international students that are already registered with us or already who went home for the summer to visit their parents and are not allowed to come back now. And even students who are just in a country we have good relationships with because the State Department doesn't have any employees and they're not. Issuing visas, student visas in a timely break, so we are suffering from that as well. So there is some chaos at the federal level that are affecting us at the local level. Next, please. So. We know in a lot of places, people think differently about equity and inclusion and I. Uh, we are intentionally. Not using the word diversity at Cascadia College. We have a diverse population. We know that. We recognize it. What we wanna make sure is that we have an equitable environment for all people to learn and we have an inclusive environment. And seven years ago, we. Uh, measured graduation rates, transfer rates, retention rates and student success rates. Uh, between white students and historically underrepresented students, there were huge ten, twelve percent gaps. In that, in all of those categories. So we very intentionally seven years ago started doing some programs to see if we could close that gap. It was not a program specifically for our underrepresented students. It was programs for all students. All students could get mentoring. All students had to meet with an advisor. And the changes that we did as of three weeks ago, those ten, twelve percent gaps in achievement don't exist. Our underrepresented students, because of the kinds of things that we're doing for all of our students, are now succeeding at the same rates as our. Uh, historically mainstream students, so we're very proud of that. Uh, and when somebody tells you that intentionality behind creating opportunity is not good. I disagree because you can see a lot more students going to university because of those efforts. Social justice high school conferences, uh sometimes called student of color conferences. We get more than six hundred students on our campus every year from the school districts who want to attend those, and those turn into a yield for us. That means they. Come to the conference for their high school, they have a day there, and they end up enrolling with us because it's they find it's a place where they feel they belong. That belongingness is hugely important. And the last thing for today is I talked to you last year about this course we have called the Foundations of Equity and Inclusion course. It's something we created for our employees to teach them. How did inequities begin in our country? How do we deal with that now? What is the foundational information you need to know? About succeeding in a diverse world? And most of our employees have taken that, and we started then. Uh, I offered this to you all to the school districts, to everybody I talked to. We invite other agencies and businesses to come take that course from us. And in the next slide, uh we had a company, sustainability company called O'Brien Three Sixty. And they just finished a company-wide investment in doing that program with us. We were in the last year, and these are comments from the assessment forms that we uh collected from them. They feel that the the course created connections between them. They feel that. They now have a vocabulary to understand these issues that the nation is talking about. They feel that we shared a lot of knowledge with them. And uh. We encouraged them to be more intentional about recognizing equity in their own workplace and. It's just the benefit we have of not only serving our younger people, our high school student learners, but also our adult learners. And it's not just on the typical classes that you might take when you think about university. It's also about things that affect our society. Cascadia is really proud to be that stretch group. So we are doing really well. That concludes my report. Did anybody tie me? Cause I need to know this. When I go to the next city council, I I I shoot for like seven or eight minutes. Um, and if if I'll have any entertained questions, if not, I'll let you on to your business.
Anybody have any questions for Dr. Murray? I I just do have a comment. Congratulations on all of your success. I know personally how hard you work and how much you've invested into. Uh, making Cascadia what it is today with your team and seeing the numbers on graduation rates, um the. The uh disproportionate gaps of graduation rates going away, the success of the equity inclusion. Side of things which we need now more than ever um in this world um is really incredible and uh such a bright light and congratulations.
I'm really uh uh proud for one other little fact. Uh, I'm the longest-serving higher education CEO in the state universities and community colleges, having been at Cascadia for fifteen years. And it that longevity allows me to see the long-term goal and to nurture us towards that place. The city manager of Kenmore had this phrase that I've adopted relentless incrementalism. We have to take small steps to get to our major goals and it just takes relentless. That's a long time. Do that. So I'm glad that my uh my board has kept me around and I need to continue to invest in that. Thank you very much. Enjoy your evening.
Thank you.
Um, next up, we have a presentation by our finance director, uh Beth McMinn on our twenty five, twenty twenty six revenue sources.
Evening, Beth McMinn, Finance Director. Um, I'll start off by. Pointing out the fact that the foundation of our city government is our fiscal health. A current review of revenue will sit the city in navigating the remainder of our current biennial budget. Revenues in this report are estimated by the finance department based on um using economic forecasts, past trends, current impacts. And general knowledge of city revenues. So in this report, we will be focusing on significant revenue sources for the city listed here. Revenue assumptions, revenue estimates in this report assume a one percent increase in property tax. Impact fees and general facility charges are increased by the two-year average engineering user worth, which is. Five point three six for twenty twenty five and estimated at two point five four for twenty six. Utilities and building permit revenues are increased by the two-year average CPIU, which is four point two two percent for twenty five and. Three point two six for twenty six. So property tax revenue is our largest source of revenue um in our general fund. Twenty twenty six revenue assumes a one percent increase. The city's current levy red lift ends on December twenty fifth. Um, and is reflected in the twenty twenty six revenue estimate. Eighty percent of our regular property tax revenue and one hundred percent of the levy lid lift are deposited to the general fund. The remaining twenty percent of regular property tax. Is deposited to our street fund. Uh, revenue for twenty twenty five is estimated to be at budget. Uh, property tax revenue shows a trend of small annual increases. You can see on our slide. Um, property tax revenues are unrestricted and may be used for any lawful government purchase. Next. So sales tax revenue is our second largest revenue source in the general fund. For many cities in Washington, the sales tax is a larger source of revenue over property tax. And the goal would be to become less reliant on property tax with its limitations and rely more on sales tax. The challenge is that sales tax revenue is sensitive to economic conditions and can be more volatile. Volatile than property tax. General sales tax revenue is deposited into our general fund. Sales tax from construction is split between the general fund and our strategic fund. Regular sales tax revenue for twenty twenty five is estimated to be. About thirty five thousand above budget. Um, construction tax is estimated at budget. Overall, we're seeing small but steady increases in sales tax revenue year over year. And sales tax revenues are unrestricted and may be used for any lawful government purpose. So the city imposes a point two percent transportation benefit district sales tax. Um, current year revenue estimates are at budget. Um, and revenue can be used for eligible transportation expenses. The city imposes a tax on the income of utility companies conducting business in the Jewish district of the city. Utility taxes deposited into our general fund and can be used for any lawful government purpose. Current year revenues are estimated to be slightly above budget for electricity, natural gas, garbage and telephone. Um, budget for others. Um, the twenty twenty five total utility tax revenue is estimated to be about eighty four thousand above budget. Revenues for building permitting are declining as the number of current and active housing projects decline from the current building cycle. Current year revenue estimates are above budget due to the increase in commercial and miscellaneous permit fees. Um, as the city conservatively budgets based mainly on res- residential permit estimates. Our twenty twenty five revenue is estimated to be about two hundred and fifty eight thousand above budget. Um, it is important to note that increased revenue from prior years provide a strong fund balance to try and continue support. For work to be completed in years ahead. Impact fees are one-time. Charges assessed on new development projects to help support new or expanded public capital facilities. Uh, school park and traffic impact fees for the current year are estimated to be at budget. Park and traffic impact fees are deposited in our capital improvement funds. Um, school impact fees are collected by the city and then dispersed to school district, resulting in no fiscal impact to the city. Revenue review, school district has adopted a plan for zero school impact fees for twenty twenty six. Gen- general facility charges are connection charges and are assessed. So that property owners bear the equitable share of the cost of such a system. Revenue from general facilities charges support capital projects and are deposited into our capital improvement funds. Current year revenues are estimated to be about seventy five thousand over budget. So utility rates typically increase by the estimated average two-year CPIU in addition to accounting for growth. For the twenty twenty four rate study, utility rates for water will remain the same through twenty twenty seven. Stormwater will increase by twelve percent each year through twenty twenty eight. Current year revenues are estimated to be about two hundred thousand above budget for water and at budget for sewer and storm. Utility revenues support the cost of operating equipment replacement and facility expansion to meet service demand. A real estate excise tax is levied upon all sales of real estate. REIT revenue can be somewhat volatile as it depends on both the volume of real estate and the sale value of the property sold. Current year revenues are estimated to be at budget. REIT funds may be used for capital projects and limited capital facility maintenance. City funds are invested in a manner that provides security as well as a good way rate of return. The city experienced a bump in uh investment earnings pre-two thousand twenty three. And are estimated and are conservatively estimated for two thousand twenty five and two thousand twenty six as. Investments continue to provide a good rate of return. Current year estimate, current year investment revenues are estimated to be about two hundred thirteen thousand five hundred dollars over budget. So um just in closing, overall, twenty twenty five revenues are expected to be higher than we originally budgeted. This is a comfortable place to be in our brochure of the biennial budget. Twenty twenty five general fund revenues are estimated estimated to be a hundred and forty five thousand nine hundred and forty five dollars. Higher than originally budgeted due to an increase in estimated utility tax, sales tax and investment earnings. This is a very comfortable place to be as the general fund is um an area of focus for us. Um, and like you said, it's a very com- comfortable place to be as we near the end of our brochure of our biennial. The next steps would be. Questions for discussion.
Thank you, Director McMenon, great news and uh. The state where we're not giving the best news. Um, does anyone have any questions for Director McMenon? Have some more shaker.
Not really a question, more more of a comment. Uh, I I wanna thank you for this presentation that since I've been with the council for four years now. This is really the first concise, consolidated, easy to understand. View I've seen of uh of revenue sources for the for the city, so it's much, much appreciated. I think it helps uh. All of us, it'll certainly help the public too. I'm glad to hear that the public hearings are uh are scheduled for this. I think it's gonna help uh everyone in the community, so thanks.
Anyone else? Councilmember Naplin and then Olin?
Yeah, um, I have a couple of questions. I guess I'll just ask one start, um. I guess the one I was most curious about is on the water revenue. It shows that it's down for, it's managed to be down for twenty twenty six? I don't know if you can go back to that slide.
So our. Our twenty twenty six, our twenty twenty five revenue is greater than what we budgeted. Twenty twenty six, we're still estimating at. Twenty twenty-six, we're still estimating at budget, which is less than twenty twenty-five. But we don't have enough information to know um you know what's related to happen in twenty twenty-six, so we have not adjusted.
And Director McMankey and Director Wodzinski kind of clarified that that also has to do with how much water people use and the weather, et cetera. They change that uh that revenue source based on consumption?
What she said.
Yeah, I just wasn't sure if it was taking into account that we have new users, quite a few new users. And so I wasn't sure if there was an underlying assumption that was perhaps used also for property tax that um, you know, new construction, uh, we don't just get one percent more each year, typically new construction. Um, obviously expands our tax base. And so I'm wondering for both utility tax revenue, utility revenue, you know, rate revenue and property tax, if we build in some type of an assumption of new homes online? Kind of, did that make sense?
I mean, we try to, but again, it's all based on usage. So we kind of use past trends, current year today. So, you know, looking at our current, what we've received here today, finishing out the year, we're we're pretty solid up, you know, strong up. We're gonna finish a little higher than budget. Um, will that carry into twenty twenty-six? I I maybe, um, you know, so we're just not at the point yet when we we really wanna adjust the twenty-six budget yet. Um, until we are a little bit more, we like to be very conservative with our revenue uh projections and estimates. So, um, you know, we'll see what happens when we go into twenty twenty-six and we start realizing some actual revenues.
So King County hasn't released like a preliminary new construction or, you know, how they normally release um the new, the portion of assessed value that's related to new construction that expands our tax base. Do you know what I mean? It they usually come out there early and
Yeah, we just got in some preliminary um reports or the preliminary worksheet from King County, so I've not really assessed.
And just to remind council, um, you get two questions and then we go around and follow up after that. So Councilmember Olin?
So I thought it was interesting that, by the way, I seen the presentation. Thank you for the report. I thought it was interesting that we have a decrease in permitting revenue, but we have an increase in construction. Is that time delays or because there's already work in in the funnel that that has already been permitted? Now work is gonna present as construction sales tax revenue next year? It just seems weird that one would be down and the other up.
Permits are issued and then you go bill.
Yeah, yeah, so it's so. We're done with the permitting, but we have the work in front of us. Okay, thank you.
May I approach him Mercer?
Yeah, this is sort of a, in the same thing with some of the utility tax and really just in terms of the assumptions. I I know that um, again, at the federal level, there's been a number of changes around green energy investments. We've seen electricity charges, gas charges increasing. Um, obviously, twenty twenty-five came in in higher, that's both reflecting of usage, but also uh since it's a, it's a tax, the the actual revenue that's collected on those utilities. For twenty twenty-six, does it assume sort of a similar growth curve or is it just applying the same assumptions as twenty twenty-five?
Twenty twenty-six is still looking very like conservative. Um. We have a little bit more real-time numbers and data based on what we're seeing in twenty twenty-five, um, as to whether or not that will carry into twenty twenty-six. Um, you know, we don't have enough data to be confident to really raise that twenty-six estimate up much until we kind of get into twenty twenty-six and see, you know, what the numbers look like coming in.
At one point too, I'm a I'm a water utility. It is more volatile based on whether we had one of our largest months ever. So, again, a big swing in P in the summer as we are warmer, but again, not estimating the same type of summer, more of an hour summer for twenty twenty-six. Like, which is why we're gonna adjust the revenue for twenty-six. And sewer doesn't trend because sewer, we're a very rate-based um consumption use for water, sewers flow. So, yes, a commercial site who uses more water pays more sewer, but residences are flat and fixed, which is why the trend tends to just chug along. Um, as you get more in growth, they all are contributing to that. Uh, and one thing that I didn't miss, Miss McManon, uh, didn't mention was water and sewer are volatile at zero percent increases for twenty-six and seven, I think she said. Uh, she's, uh, you didn't say one of the utility, not both, just one. Storm is going my fault.
Thank you all. Any other questions? All right, we'll go ahead and move on to the public hearing. Um, so I'll go ahead and read it um those uh rules into the record and then we'll begin a public hearing. In adherence to the regulations outlined for public hearings before the Duval City Council, Chapter Nine of the Duval City Council Procedures Manual, any individual seeking to address council during the designated public comment segment must comply with the following procedures. First, sign in on the provided form specific to the public hearing, and second, thoroughly complete all pertinent sections of the said form. Upon commencement of the hearing, as announced by the chair to play the mayor, the city clerk will present the chair with a sign-in sheet. Subsequently, the chair will proceed with the agenda for the public hearing. Each speaker will be summoned to the podium in the order listed on the sign-in form, where they must communicate their name and if relevant, their address, affiliation with any organization or group being represented and their corresponding role or position within said organization or group. Time moments for speaking given instance are three minutes for individuals representing themselves and five minutes for those representing a group or organization unless otherwise determined by majority vote of the council president. The city clerk will monitor and enforce these time limits, setting a timer for each speaker to ensure adhering. Comments should be pertinent to the subject matter of the public hearing and respectfully address the city council. Personal remarks are deemed inappropriate. Disorderly conduct, including disruptive behavior such as booing or harassment, will not be tolerated and may result in removal from the premises. Speakers may alternatively submit written statements, which will be added to the official record by the city clerk. Questions posed during the hearing will not be answered immediately, but may be addressed at the chair's discretion following the votes of the public comic period. Copies of city council and public hearing procedures will be available upon request and distributed to attendees at the outset of each public hearing session conducted by the Duval City Council. With that, I will open the public hearing. Do we have anyone signed up to speak?
We only had um Evelyn Thomas who spoke earlier uh and the other, uh, the others who signed are no longer here.
Right, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to the reference? And seeing them, we will go ahead and close the public hearing and move on to existing business. First item is Agenda Bill twenty-five dash forty-six, Public Safety Sales Tax Ordinance for Discussion and Decision, City Administrator McNabb.
Uh, good evening, uh, thank you again. Uh, so in your packet, uh, you had the draft ordinance that um, I, you have the draft ordinance that I prepared to effectuate the um uh passage of a public safety sales tax is been reviewed by council. Uh, you also have an agenda bill in your packet that outline um the uh background and history of uh uh ESHB, the House Bill twenty fifteen, which allows legislative authorities, cities and counties to impose the sales tax, sales and use tax at point oh one percent to be used for criminal justice purposes. Um, I've outlined uh the process for the criminal justice sales tax, what is required uh at the attorney general level and the timelines for that. Um, additionally, we have looked at and chief and lieutenant have looked and an exhaustive review in preparation of our requirements to, if the council decides to pass the ordinance tonight. We are prepared to um present our information to the CJTC, the Criminal Justice Training Commission, which will certify that we've met all the requirements to impose the sales stuff as well as meet all the requirements to then also apply for the grant. Um, as we discussed the last time at council, those are not mutually exclusive, so we could apply for the grant. Not have the bill tax ordinance, but the requirements that CJTC or CJTC requires of us are the same. So, um, we are prepared to put that uh information into the CJTC. Uh, expeditiously, it is finally open. So they have a form that is on the website, um, and they are ready to receive submissions for both the sales tax as well as the grants. Um, I did put in here one proposed use for the proceeds of the imposition of a sales tax is to support funding for the school resource officer. As we mentioned earlier, the levy expires on December twenty-fifth and we will lose funding at the end of the year for that um for the school resource officer. Um, the reason it is on a somewhat expedited schedule is if we want to start collecting the sales tax revenue at the beginning of the year, we must tell the Department of Revenue that we have passed an ordinance or are prepared to collect the revenue on October, well, AWC says the seventeenth, CJTC says the eighteenth, but either way, we're gonna get it early next week. So, um, otherwise we'll miss the deadline and we'll have to wait till April uh to collapse. Uh, if we, um, there there's a requirement that you do tonight, but it will, we we miss the window for the Department of Revenue and we'll have to wait a couple of months if we wanna collect it. Um, I also included in the packet and this was collected, information I collected last week. Uh, I did not check again today, but CJTC continues to update the list of cities who have passed a uh HB twenty fifteen sales tax. And I included a snapshot of that in your council packet. And so we have King County, obviously, we've discussed King County. Uh, the city of Bellingham, city of Britain, city of Colima, Edmonds, SeaTac, Black Diamond, Kent, and Linden as of last week. I haven't checked, you know, a lot of cities are on our council agenda, so I don't know what's happening tonight. Um, but there are quite a few cities who have passed this. Um, with that, I have no other um presentation because we've already had a presentation on kind of the fundamentals of this tax. And um, I think Chief and I are happy to answer any remaining questions that you might have on this.
Would someone like to make a motion?
I move to approve Agenda Bill twenty-five forty-six, ordinance thirteen forty, adopting a zero-point-one sales tax and use tax to be used for criminal justice and public safety purposes.
Second, any further discussion? Councilmember Naplin?
Yeah, there was something new in the packet in relation to how this might be used. And it was mentioned perhaps that this would be used to pay for this school resource officer. Um, I'm not exactly sure where that came from, but I just wanted to um request, and I, this has been something that has been brought up before, that um that's a pretty big burden for the city to take on the one-hundred percent responsibility for the school resource officer. And we are already um struggling with our budget. And I've done this several times compared to other cities, known jurisdictions in their share um to contribute to a school resource officer. And it's would be very out of the ordinary for a city to pay for it. Typically, there's a share either with the county, the school district, um, you know, we have limited ways to raise money. And so anyway, I would really like to look into that before, I mean, obviously, the city supports the school and values the relationship with the school, but I do think we need to look at, you know, what is typical. And I don't think it's intended that a city pay for uh a hundred percent of that cost, but
City Administrator McNabb and then we'll probably have Chief um and speak to that as well, but City Administrator McNabb first.
So I included it as one proposed use, that's an option. Um, and one that we've talked about at council. At previous council meeting, I also also prepared a report of my review of other jurisdictions. I can't remember, it's been within the last six months of how other jurisdictions and school districts share on the cost, and I believe that's been a couple of packets ago. Um, yeah, ours is unique. But passing the public safety sales tax does not lock us into this being the only use of this funds. We certainly, I think, are interested in talking to the school district about sustainability of the school resource officer. Um, and I would say we need time to develop that conversation and talk to the school district. Um, you know, in the meantime, we want to make sure that we're ensuring the the continuation of the program, but there's no requirement that this money be used that way. We can continue to have those conversations. I just put in there one proposed use because we have talked about that at council.
Um, Chief, did you have anything to add?
I had an agreement that they need to get partnership with the school district. We need to negotiate through that process. Uh, the levy doesn't expire, you know, this year. If we were not to partially fund that for this remaining school year, then I would pull the the officer out of the school because of funding. This gives us some opportunity to at least do a stopgap until we can develop an initiation.
Any other questions? Councilmember Naplin?
I just, I assume we're gonna go to a vote is what is next, is that correct? Good, okay, that would be the next step, yes. I just, um, before I vote, I I plan to vote no, and it's not because I do not support our wonderful police department. Um, our revenues have been up substantially. We're building a lot of new homes that are bringing in additional revenue. Um, I don't feel comfortable further burdening the community with raising sales tax, especially when the economy is already feeling a little tight. Um, so I just wanna make it clear that I do fully support our police department. I value what they do to our, do for our community. I do believe our city has substantially more revenues um than we've had before. And I would just like to continue supporting the police without losing time.
Uh, before the vote, I would like to make a comment. And first of all, is thank you to our city administrator and our police chief for um, your uh significant work on this item, um, addressing all of our revenue sources over the last couple of years. And here, this issue, including uh the multiple discussions with, um, and including our our finance director as well, including multiple discussions about where the gaps are in our budget, um, including that that fact is that our gaps are in general fund, uh, which is uh essentially only our police and parks maintenance is funded out of the general fund at this point. Um, also would like to just also remind uh council and the public that the levy that is expiring was in fact voter-approved specifically for that purpose of having an SRO. So our community has already expressed strong support for taxpayer dollars, city taxpayer dollars going to the support of our SROs and our police department. Um, I also do wanna point out as well that um this is a discussion that we've had uh dozens of times over the last eight years. Um, since we have had a school resources officer, this same issue has come up at least a dozen times, if not more, uh regarding whether or not um we should be paying, you know, city taxpayers should be paying solely for the um school resource officer. Um, it has not had council support to move forward beyond that at this point. Um, and it has been uh reiterated to the city council many times that even if there is not a school resource officer, we still have the obligation to serve the high school, which means that um, we are going to have to fund service no matter what, um, which I think that uh, I think that most parents in our community in particular appreciate the fact that their children have a safe space and safe people to go and talk to um, at the high school, um, in particular, um, as they've grown up, for those that have attended school in Duval proper. Um, having those familiar faces really means a lot, especially when things uh get rough or get challenging, or they have something scary to share. Um, so it's a wonderful resource, um, and this is a small portion of what's necessary to stabilize the general fund side of the budget. But it is something that will be consistent and help stabilize the police department. Um, and so thank you for all of the staff work that went into this. Uh, all of the work, um, talking to the legislature and uh your professional associations to move this forward over the last several years. Um, and with that, uh, we'll take a roll call though.
Mayor Pretend Mercer? Councilmember Olin? Councilmember Schaffer? Councilmember McCandry? Councilmember Soffel? Councilmember Naplin? Councilmember Kufel?
Yeah, I saw it. Thank you. Um, now we're moving on to Agenda Bill twenty-five dash forty-seven, Discussion of Municipal Annexation with Director Steve Wodzinski of Public Works.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Staff citizens are in, if you would, it's folks on the screen, Steve Wodzinski of Public Works. This is short and sweet, um. We have been at the uh uh very fortunate in time to to have been annexing or purchasing properties for the growth of our parks within our city for facility needs. And there we go. Um, that said, it's time now we own the land and into the city, so next slide. Um, just so we all familiarize ourselves with the lots from the Big Rock Ridge neighborhood. We are beginning the two lots north of the existing mall field and then technically three lots south of the existing mall field. Um, all bought at different times. Uh, we are proposing for the northernmost and southernmost lots to be public, believed to have um, on back public property, including permanent municipal buildings, parks, schools, and fire districts can go in PDA. So a park can go in a P F, but a P F cannot go in a park. So the park facility itself of Big Rock is P O and then the three adjacent. One on the north and the two on the south will be where are preliminarily identified as being annexed in that B P O. Parks and open face designation. With that said, there is an existing structure on the northernmost piece that we do intend to keep, that it does not allow because the two northern pieces and the. Southern by acre. Northern by acre piece, hard to explain, but I'll bring it to this. This is here along Maryland, the ten acre piece we are already in design on, we are expanding trails and whatnot, so that piece was bought with King County Conservation Future Dollars. This one is planned likely to be city funds for public. Facility of Operation Center and then this is the one on the next slide. Where we have a three car kind of existing structure. That will enhance and keep it was permitted in bill two thousand. So it's a large structure which will help house some additional maintenance vehicles that we may not put elsewhere. So that said. We will be bringing this forward on the next one. Tonight, this is not the in-public hearing since it is city purchase land, so we'll bring it to the twenty first meeting for decision, assuming it's approved on the twenty first. We then have five days to wait for that and then we report to the county on the transactions of land from county to city. And that is a sixty day process and then we would expect by January first, the annexation would be complete. Those will be taken into the city limits. Not a lot there, I thought I had, so any questions worth?
Councilmember McHenry?
So is the only reason that two, four, five is designated, yeah, instead of P O is because of the building, is that the only gap?
Yeah, we funded them all the other structures and then we'd have a maintenance road to get from one part to the other and then the property had been trails throughout.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Is there any reason we can't pull this tonight?
We might have to read, read if I wrote right. Okay, go, if you're supportive, you can go, you can send it.
The administrator, the answer is we cannot because we didn't notice it for discussion.
Oh, there you go, okay.
All right. Moving on to the next Agenda Bill twenty five dash forty eight, Public Works Maintenance Yard Site Location for Discussion and or Decision, Director Landeshevsky.
Evening again, Steve Landeshevsky Public Works. Maintenance and Operations Center, so we have spoken about this a couple of times at this point. We do not see anything that. Beholds you to not move forward at this time, so next slide. We talked briefly about the amount of staff we have working where they work, we went through local plan, we have a city hall site selection team. As well as they have participated in helping us choose a Public Works Maintenance and Operations Center property, so next slide. Both, both for that firm, Makers has supported that, we did touch on that in a recent meeting. Next slide now. So for, for those again rearranging yourselves. The southernmost parcel that was purchased recently is where we are hoping to have the consensus to move the yard. Proximity to town is not overly burdensome as town is two square miles. So there's that, it is adjacent to our largest parks facility, which, which makes sense. It is adjacent to county land and we actually have spoken to the homeowners. They are happier to have a maintenance facility there and that standard hours as opposed to a park. So with that said, we did try to touch, touch base with everybody in the area, next slide. The property's sizing is, is, is great for the M O C, we are on about a half acre now, so. This approximate five acres would be much greater in its, its. Need and growth for the city's development. Split of the property purchase prices are listed there through, through our processes, so. The burden for non-parks related. King County Conservation Future Dollars, so it's not eligible, so the eight hundred fifty thousand portion would go to the city and then the remaining. Are going to be. Eight seventy-five percent covered by the grant and then twenty-five percent less, next slide. And we do have a contract amendment from King County Conservation Future Grant coming for the next meeting, it would just be on consent because we were awarded the additional ask of almost five hundred thousand dollars. That said, we do have a draft layout, next slide and. The amount of space that's prescribed as well as that's been discussed with makers and our leadership team through the citywide site selection. Process does fit better than MACHA. You have a shared use kind of entry off of Big Rock Road and then now carry into the parks development. Can be standalone and then you have parking for the, the maintenance and operations center. Operational facilities and then these are storage structures for materials and then vehicles on the back in blue. We did just test it, as we spoke last year on the M, the P S E power blocks. That's a ten thousand square foot pad on the, on the eastern edge. We have verified the wetlands actually don't encroach. As far into the properties as possible, we had the E S A finalize all that just in the last two weeks, so that's great news on the. Kind of eastern half of the properties showing up well started. In that vicinity up there. So that's where we are at and I think that's, yeah, next slide is the pros and cons of the two. Pieces that we were considering based on their current uses and then again their lack of adjacency to the park. And the bulk of structures, they, they. The one on the north had more wetlands than anticipated, not that it couldn't be built out, but the piece to the south is just more. Productive for development of yard space. As opposed to squirting around wet ones and where trees and or other elements on the northern piece, so. All in all, great sites, all in all, next slide. Everything the city needs for now and in the future would fit. And. We are at a hopeful place of council support to, to move that forward. As in selecting this as a site and then we would come back to the finance package once we put an R F P out for a designer. To do the site and the structure development in the near future. Questions, comments, there should be.
Or if someone would like to make a motion, if all you're going to do that.
Make a motion to authorize the mayor to direct staff to design replacement maintenance and operations center and we see a partial two one two nine seven zero dash zero two seven one. And share the costs as presented, I think that's under Agenda Bill twenty five forty, it wasn't on motion.
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Councilmember Supple?
Yeah, the motion states that the staff has been to design the replacement center. Replacement, maintenance and operations center, I mean, is that? I mean, Makers has provided an outline, but what level of detail are you guys going to do?
So I'll authorize the mayor to direct staff to design a replacement maintenance operations center, we would go out and procure a consultant to do the work.
Okay.
Yeah, and what, what you'll have is, so it goes through, we put an R F P out, we interview, we select, we negotiate contract and then we come back after contract.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Councilmember Kufel? Um, refresh my memory, um, P N C is paying us to.
If we, it's, there's no guarantee, but yes, that has a lease rate, it's a fixed lease rate, they want to. And in your lease blocks, you know, thirty or lease.
That's a win.
But again, they may not like the site, they feel like the site, they did pull in their look at it because they want some, or there, this, this not their. Needs, as we talked about other places that we didn't know interested in the city. They were comfortable, if it could have worked out there to do something, so.
Okay. Councilmember Athlin?
Yeah, I just realized, it seems like this item also contains. The same thing that was in the event agenda twenty five forty three, is it, is it different? Because I, twenty five forty three is the reaffirmation of purchase of public property. That's what I asked to be pulled off, but it, like this has very similar, I'm wondering what exactly is the difference? Is that just, yeah.
It needs a re-creation of the property, it was brought to our attention that we. Went into exec session, we talked about the property, the purchases all along the way for the other parcels, we never came out of executive session and, and made a motion to purchase. So that is making the motion first, because all the fees and prices are fixed and spent and agreed upon, so they're done. So that, that, that part of the number look exactly the same, as they are.
So this budget amendment required, or whether it's required or not, this is on purchasing the land, not on your estimate related to designing.
No estimate for designing, yeah, this is just estimating the, showing you where the programmatically thing the funds should come to purchase all of it.
But all I'm approving in twenty five forty eight, which is what we're talking about now, is not the funding. Of it, it's only just saying, hey, go ahead and start working towards hiring someone.
All it is, all it is approving is the purchase of the lands that we, we have bought and affirming which funds are going to pay for those properties. Because we bought the property.
That's twenty five forty.
Councilmember Athlin, I'm going to ask you to stop, you have three questions and I'll let city administrator go and if anybody else doesn't have any questions, we'll move, call the question.
Oh, no, I just, I don't have a question. We're talking about right now, which is just.
Correct.
Yeah.
But to be clear, we have purchased the land.
Yes.
Yes.
Which is a separate Agenda Bill, which is the one I pulled off, consent, so that's why I was just trying to figure out exactly.
All right, I'll call the question now. All those in favor, please say aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Moving on to Agenda Bill twenty five dash forty two, this is the request review from Adventure Community Church, City Administrator McNabb.
Um, okay, so. We discussed this issue in Cal and so what is before council tonight is the request. The first request, which is to agree to a waiver of the building permit extension.
Hey, is, would someone like to make a motion?
The next first. So.
Go ahead, Councilmember Supple?
I move to approve again the Bill twenty five forty two, authorizing, authoring a. Authorizing a fee waiver for Adventure Community Church Building Permit Extension Fee.
Second. Right, any discussion? Councilmember Schaefer?
Yeah, I'll, I'll reiterate what I, I spoke to in Cal. Just make sure everyone understands and so the folks that are in our audience will also, you want to have to say, I'm not in favor of this. I believe it will set a, or does set a precedent. And the city will be obligated in the future, obligated legally in the future. To offer the same type of. A waiver for other institutions. So there's no. There's no, I guess, we talked about a policy, there's no policy that you follow, I would like to have a policy for this, but. It will not be, it would not be done in time for this particular request. So. For lack of a policy, policy. Or the concern it would set a precedence that would essentially expose the city to other. Types of requests, expose the city and obligate the city to other types of requests in the future. I am not in, in favor of approving this.
Thank you, Councilmember Schaefer. Councilmember Athlin?
Yeah, um, we spoke about this in the Cal and one thing that was suggested is that we record into the record more specifically our intent. Behind an approval of this waiver. And so I'll just. How to summarize, it won't be perfect, but I just wanted to establish that it is a unique situation due to a fire and I would consider this disaster relief. It's not intended to set a precedent. This is. Once again, disaster relief, it was not a planned project. It wasn't a standard remodel or a rebuild, it was solely related to a disaster.
Any further questions or discussion? Councilmember Olin?
I'll comment, I, I apathetically, I, I really want to fund this and. I appreciate the project and I appreciate the church's contribution to the community. Given. The, the similarity of this project to future. Downprofit religious institutions, building, under construction, et cetera. Coming up close to their permitting fee deadlines and whatnot, I, I think, I think it is a great liability to the city to. To waive these fees at this time and I just, I, it is responsibility to the city and to the residents of the city. I can't, incoconscious, support this. Which makes me sad, I would like.
Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, roll call over.
Mayor Putnam Mercer?
Uh, no.
Uh, Councilmember Olin?
No.
Councilmember Schaefer?
No.
Councilmember McHenry?
No.
Councilmember Supple?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Athlin? Councilmember Kufel?
Thank you, Clark Potero, and now we're back to Agenda Bill twenty five dash forty three, the property purchase Agenda Bill, would someone like to make a motion? This is the one that was pulled off the consent agenda?
I move we approve Agenda Bill twenty five forty three?
Second, any further discussion? Councilmember Athlin?
This came up once before and. You know, this is the first touch and what I had requested as an option would be that we would use a hundred percent of. The utility capital funds rather than the rate paying operating fund. Due to the fact that we have more than sufficient G S D revenue that is in the capital fund. Our G S D revenue easily meet all future projects with excess. Remaining to pay for the property purchase. And I do not feel that we should charge it to rate payers. In addition, there could be an argument that technically, you know, the operating fund and the capital fund is. You know, basically the same, we could combine them if we wanted, but my argument back would be that. Operating fund expenses are typically used to justify future rate increases and so to show a charge to the rate payers. When we have sufficient capital lending set aside would potentially justify future rate increases that. In my opinion, would not be justified because this is a one-time cop. And we have sufficient capital money, so with that said, I would like to make a motion to. Move the. Amount. Charged to the operating funds for water, sewer and storm. And instead have that portion charged to the capital fund.
So is that an amendment because we have a motion on the floor?
Yes.
Okay. But is Director McMenon and Director Landeshevsky, is there anything you'd like to address enough before we begin discussion?
I'm seeing the table I need to be looked at, so. We were only programming a storm capital amendment in need relative to the utility funds. I didn't hear anything changing parts of the week, so. I guess there might be a number in the budget amendment. All of them. For the capital funds. Based on the expenses in the budget and what we had programmed, not that we don't need to do it, we, we would not need to do it now, we would need to possibly adjust it. In the twenty twenty six process, so that's.
And I did forget to ask for a second, is there a second on that proposed amendment? Seeing none, the amendment fails for a lack of a second, so is there any further question or discussion on the underlying Agenda Bill? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And with that, we have no further business, so we are adjourned.